Harvey So, our first item of business is discussion and we're action for approval of minutes for the commission work session held on April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four.
Don't move.
Second, on paper.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, our first discussion, we're a little behind, a lot behind. Item two is a discussion regarding the two thousand and twenty three and two thousand and twenty four quarter one financial results, two thousand and twenty four quarter one budget amendments and capital projects. We have in the room Commissioner Brewer, myself, Scott Park, John Bond, Ricky Hatch, Stephanie Ebert, Sean Wilkinson, Stephanie Russell, Sheriff Ryan Arvin is online, and we have Jessica Clark with us as well. Then send anyone? So, okay.
Commissioner, would you mind putting? Okay, or got it?
Got it.
Minimizing that on the right, my right, your left, I suppose? Okay, thank you. Okay, so a lot of people are mine for our quarterly financials. That's just exciting.
Yeah.
Let me see what in the world is going on here and try to minimize my screen. Oh, I'm not nervous. Just have to click. Okay, so I just wanted to start talking a little bit about the inflation rate. As you can see, in two thousand and twenty, you know, right before COVID, we were basically, you know, two, less than two percent inflation. We had the big bump that everybody's felt and experienced, and then since then, we've stabilized between three and four percent. I say stabilized, we've had a several quarters within that range. I don't know whether it's going to continue to stabilize, whether it's going to go down or whether it's going to go up. I don't have my my crystal ball isn't working that well. But the reason why I want to show you this is I want you to just kind of keep in your mind the growth rate and then the decrease in that inflation rate because that plays significantly into our sales tax revenue that we're going to talk about in just a moment. So keep in mind that bump and then we're kind of leveling off at around that between three and four percent inflation rate. So I just want to go over quickly what happened last year, two thousand and twenty three. So we originally budgeted to have thirty five million dollars in property tax revenue. We have thirty four point eight.
Wow.
We collected ninety nine point two seven percent. We were really close. We usually are really close in our property tax budget. So that's not abnormal, but so we're doing good. We're anticipating lower growth this year than last year. One point seven five percent to two percent is what we're anticipating, and that's just because building permits were down, mortgage rates were up, and it was hard for people to qualify to build a new house. Sales tax is a different story though. So sales tax in two thousand and twenty two, we had eighteen, just under eighteen and a half million dollars. We budgeted twenty one million dollars to come in in two thousand and twenty three. That was our original budget. That was when we were still wondering what inflation was going to do. Actual collections came in at eighteen point six million dollars, so two hundred thousand dollars up from the prior year. So point eight percent growth rate where we had projected a seven percent growth rate. Now, we were aware of that going throughout the year. We made adjustments throughout the year, but I just wanted to compare our original budget to what actually came in, and it just didn't grow near as much as we thought. It basically was flat.
So what was the percent on that? Not very much.
Point eight.
Point eight.
Point eight percent. So less than one percent.
Yeah.
So in two thousand and twenty four, we budgeted nineteen point eight million dollars. So that's. No. Okay, so in two thousand and twenty four, we're budgeting eighteen, or excuse me, nineteen point four percent, excuse me, nineteen point eight million dollars. We've lowered our projections from seven percent to four percent. We're just moving forward, but I just wanted to point out the sales tax growth is not coming in as we had originally anticipated.
I hate that news. So did we drop that, the budget, or?
Yeah, so we dropped the budget from twenty one point two million dollars down to nineteen point eight.
Okay.
That's still probably a little high because we weren't, we were a little shocked at how low the two thousand and twenty three actual numbers came in, but it is within our margin of errors, and I'll show you why I'm not super worried about it in just a second. I mean, I am worried about it, but not for this budget cycle. Let's say it that way.
Maybe in the future.
Yeah.
Well, well, okay, welcome. High praise.
We barely got started.
Thank you for starting.
Yeah. So property tax is good, sales tax were a little low. That's where we've got so far. So we were eighty seven point seven percent of our budget. Oddly enough, that's the worst I've ever been off. I kind of felt it. I took that one a little personal now. In my defense, it was unprecedented inflation time, and we were growing at twelve percent, and we were being conservative in the county, keeping it down at seven or nine percent because we didn't want to get used to a high level of growth and then have to really trim our budget, which is, I'm glad because we have enough in reserve that we were able to easily cover the shortfall in our budget, and we had plenty of time to budget. So everything happened exactly as we wanted to do, and that's why we are conservative, but still, I don't like being off. So I'll have to get my forecast, my crystal ball, a little bit better this next time, not get it at the dollar store. Now, you've heard me talk about the tale of two counties before. We talked about the municipal services fund and then also the county as a whole. And several, for several years in the past, we were talking about how the municipal services fund was not doing as well as the county. Well, we kind of flopped a little bit. Municipal Services Fund, we pulled in three point eight million dollars in tax revenue. We budgeted four point three.
Going bankrupt.
In two thousand and seventeen, yeah, and we'll show that in just a bit. In two thousand and twenty three, we actually collected four million dollars, and we're budgeting four point two. So when you look at the actual collections, it's up about six to seven percent so far year to date. So it's growing at a faster rate than the county is growing, is what I'm saying. Municipal Services Fund.
A lot of that due to the tax increase that we did, what, in year nineteen?
Not in the sales tax. So sales tax is just the population.
This is the sales tax.
Just the sales tax.
Okay. And I think what it does is it shows strength in online purchases versus people probably sell, yeah.
And population growth as well. So that's, that's a good factor of this, you know, population growth, you get more of that fifty cents on the dollar for population.
Right.
So we were closer on that estimate, and we're still fine moving forward. So I just wanted to show a little bit of updated economic data. So I get this from the state, and that's where we, we get most of our sales tax forecasts. For two thousand and twenty four, they're estimating three point four percent. We're at about four percent on ours, so we're a little bit higher than theirs. But I think that's reasonable going forward, and next year, they're looking at about three point seven percent. So that historically speaking has been decent sales tax growth. You know, pre-COVID, that was normal, you know, between three and four percent. So I think we're coming back to normal growth. We have that huge amount of inflation, which is what I showed you at the beginning, and I think that just, that was the result. I mean, that was the reason for all of our extra income. I think as inflation levels out, we're just going to have our continual growth rate. And I don't anticipate any big swings in sales tax going forward for the next few years. Also, our building, oops, building permit data, four point three percent. That's Utah as a whole, Mount Weaver County. We actually get our, our numbers from John Ullaberry, which is why our property tax revenues are really, really close because we know exactly the number of building permits that have been pulled. We're anticipating lower growth than that, two, two and a quarter. I am not sure what's going on with my mouse today, but I'm going to start. Yeah, it must be. I'm going to start using my page up, page down. So this is the general fund results for two thousand and twenty three. So we budgeted to spend seven point seven million dollars of our fund balance. A lot of that was on one-time projects. We actually added two million dollars to our fund balance. So that's a swing of nine point nine million dollars. And here's why we have the swing. Our tax revenue was down three million dollars. That was our sales tax forecast being off. Our jail revenue is down one point five million dollars. That's because we're putting more and more of our own county inmates into our jail and therefore have fewer and fewer beds to lease out to the US Marshals. Interest income, seven million dollar positive swing. That's primarily because John Bond is giving me more interest.
Wow.
PTIF rate on the return.
Wow. Way to go, John Bond.
So if you pull out that interest, we were, we would have been about a three million dollar swing from our, our budget, which is about normal. So the sales tax, excuse me, the, the tax revenues being down, we kind of offset that with some of our payroll savings. That normally happens each year as we have our estimates. The real winner in this was our interest income, which just was way above what we ever forecasted.
For.
Yeah.
Forecasted.
Now, we're always very conservative in that because that is entirely driven off of the PTIF return, and it went from like one percent to five percent, and it could easily go from five percent to two percent. So we never count that as ongoing revenue. It's always one-time money that comes and helps cover any shortfalls in our estimates or any one-time overages. And then these rollovers, you can see you've already reviewed and approved that earlier on, but these are projects that we budgeted in two thousand and twenty three that we intend to spend, but in two thousand and twenty four, they just didn't get done before the end of the year.
So what about payroll savings? Where'd that come from?
So I can show you. I had that slide ready just in case you asked it.
There you go.
But it was hidden. So there we go. Sheriff's Office gave us three point seven million dollars of payroll savings. Everybody else combined gave us, in the general fund, gave us one point eight million dollars of payroll savings. This is in line with prior years. Just turnover at the sheriff's office and not being able to fill all those positions, we've still budgeted for all those positions as though they were going to be staffed. This money we use as one-time payroll savings. Now, if you recall, in two thousand and twenty four, when we did the increase for employees, we really tightened up our payroll savings. We really tightened up our budget. So I do not anticipate having this much money in two thousand and twenty four, saving this much money in payroll savings. In fact, I'll be surprised if we even hit the two million dollar mark in payroll savings. Is that, is that?
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry, I'm filled positions. So you're, you're thinking we won't get to two million this next year?
Because part of what we had to do in tightening up our budgets is that we didn't budget overtime in a lot of these departments and said, look, if you have any fail overtime because you're down a position, well, we're going to use that position's money to pay for the overtime. And so we're trying to get that estimate down. And I think we're going to be successful. I think we'll still have a little bit because we are, we tend to be conservative. So we'll still have a little bit of payroll savings, but it's not going to be five million dollars.
So let me ask you a question. You mind? The school security officer that we told the sheriff we would fund within his payroll savings, is that where this would fall? For this year, I'm talking about for this year, we know that we're going to look at it again when we budget in the fall, but for this current year, for this school year.
No, we never use this to fund salaries and wages because that's an ongoing expense, and this is one-time payroll savings. And so we have the sheriff convert one of his vacant positions into the school resource officer.
Isn't that what the payroll savings is anyway?
The payroll savings is the one-time savings. So if I quit and it takes Ricky three months to hire me.
Right.
Or hire my replacement, then there's that one-time money that's the savings.
Same thing as a vacancy.
Yes, similar to a vacancy.
For this year. I mean, we, we know we're only trying to fund it from June or whatever through December.
So how we did it this year is, and how we've always done it, is we don't ever use the one-time savings to fund any ongoing positions. And so what I told the sheriff after our conversations was we're going to convert one of your vacant positions that you haven't hired, and it's now permanently a school resource. I forgive the time of it, a school resource.
For the supervisor.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then in the budget cycle, they'll ask for that deputy position back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the difference is in, in previous years, we've actually had additional lines for overtime and different things, and, and we basically took those out this year and said, that's got to come from your payroll savings this year instead of having a separate line for it. So that's why I think we're going to see smaller numbers next year.
Yeah. Which is good budgeting.
More accurate. Yeah, we want to be as tight as possible. We didn't want to ask for any more in the tax increase, and we absolutely had to.
This shows, yeah, that's good. I would love to have this. I would love for people to know this.
Municipal Services Fund.
Jessica.
So the Municipal Services Fund, we budgeted to spend three hundred thousand dollars of our fund balance. Again, a lot of that is on one-time projects. We actually added one point one million dollars to our fund balance, and here's why. Our tax revenue, which includes B and C roads, was up just, just barely, but up. Our charges for services, those are engineering permits, our building inspection permits, our basically any fee that we charge for service, those were up. Interest income, two hundred and eight thousand dollars, payroll savings, ninety two thousand, budgetary savings, two hundred and seventy one. That's when we just budgeted and didn't spend out the whole budget. So we have contracted services, and we think it's going to be a hundred thousand dollars, and we spend ninety three thousand dollars. So there's seven thousand dollars of savings. And then rollovers, which is the same thing. We budgeted in two thousand and twenty three, they'll be spent in two thousand and twenty four. So there, there's the one point five million dollar swing from our three hundred thousand dollar loss to our one point two million dollar gain. Now, we did have some questions on the Municipal Services Fund. We can go over it if you'd like, the historical, but we've been adding the last four years, we've added at least a million dollars to that fund balance primarily because of, if you remember that very first slide, the sales tax inflation, that, that bump, our sales tax shot through the roof. At the same time, we were cutting our budget when COVID came out because we didn't know what was going to happen. Sales tax, we had record sales tax. And so I don't anticipate this ongoing million dollar addition to fund balance to continue in the Municipal Services Fund. We're coming back in off that bump. I think wisely, we chose not to spend all that new money as though we're ongoing because we don't anticipate it being ongoing. So I think you're going to see that number come back down to a much more reasonable level, but we still added a million to the fund balance.
What's a reasonable level?
I would say five to ten percent. Now, that's a trick question because we have a lot of, and Sean could speak to more of this. We have a lot of needs in the Upper Valley for infrastructure, roads, bridges, and all that sort of stuff. We budget that kind of on a cash basis as we have money for it, we pay for it. So we're trying to save up money to fund an actual capital improvements plan so we can have, you know, listed out, here's when we anticipate replacing these bridges or redoing these roads. When we have that, we'll have a better idea of Commissioner Harvey of what your answer is, is how much we need to add to the fund each year to cover those capital improvements. But right now, the Municipal Services Fund Capital Projects Plan really is a pay-as-you-go basis. It doesn't have a lot of pre-planning in it, if I can say it that way. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. It's just.
Question, Mr. Chair.
Please.
So I, part of the reason for us, I think you stated is when we were in the COVID years prior to, we got real conservative on what we're going to spend because we thought there's a good chance that the economy may go south. So we, we started cutting, and then the surprising, the sales tax went off the chart. So I think it was actually a combination of those two factors, was it not?
Yes, yes, it was. Our budget actually went down.
It wasn't all on sales tax increasing, it was increase on tax, sales tax, and conservative numbers on what we budget.
Yes.
Remember those times?
Absolutely. But another thing too conversant about Weaver County, and it does have a indirect impact on this, but our, our tourism, like all most other cities, was down eighty and ninety percent, where our tourism was down six or seven percent total. Amazing. Those numbers were amazing for Weaver County because of our assets like the Golden Spike Event Center and the Ice Sheet and, and the, and the Upper Valley Parks. And, you know, the camping of the parks was up over a thousand percent. A thousand percent. So because we have a diversified portfolio of culture, parks, and recreation, some of that helped us, which has that indirect effect on our budget in some of these other areas as well. So I think we're very, we have a very diversified portfolio which insulates us especially for things like this. This is good. This is good news.
Here's just kind of a breakout if you want any more detail on the Municipal Services Fund. As we've mentioned in the past, you know, engineering and planning are kind of our, our loss, areas where we have losses. Our building inspection makes money, but we use that to help cover the cost of planning. Right? You can't charge the full cost of reviewing a subdivision plot to that developer, that one developer has to be borne by all the people who build in that area, which is what comes through the building inspection fees. And so that's why you see a big loss in planning, for example, that building inspections making money. If you were to lump those two together, which a lot of departments, a lot of cities do, it would show a loss in that loss. But you can see the different breakout here, kind of the services that we offer and whether it's making money or losing money, and that's the one point one, almost one point two million dollars we added this year. Shifting to culture, parks, and rec. So we lost five point two million dollars of, our operating loss before transfers in from the tourism tax revenue. That's up from about four, I remember the numbers exactly, four point five million in two thousand and twenty two and three point seven million in two thousand and twenty three. So our operating losses, now, some of that is repair. You know, equipment and stuff like that, but it's not, it really hasn't been that much higher in this last few years. You know, it's kind of been stable. So salaries and wages is a big driver of that. It's just expensive to have employees. Costs have been going up for employees, cost of healthcare, all that's been going up. And so our loss is continuing to grow, our operating loss. Now, the one good thing that we have is that our tourism tax revenue has been growing as well, and the tourism tax revenue has grown faster than our expensive have grown, expenses have grown in culture parks and rec. So we continue to add money to the tourism fund balance. So if you look this year, we started at nine, we spent seven, so we had two million dollars left over. We added that to the fund balance. We'd started at five million dollars this year, we added two, so now we're at seven point four million. That money is being used to renovate the Ogden Nichols Conference Center. Once that renovation is done and paid for, we still hope to be adding money to that fund balance and use that to save it up so we could remodel Ice Sheet or Golden Spike or Park or whatever other culture parks and rec facility that we have. Okay. I'm just showing that. All right. So now we're going to talk a little bit about our fund balances. So you've seen this chart in the past. Paramedic Fund, looks like we have a huge amount of money, but we're saving money in that fund on purpose for when we have to expand and add another paramedic unit. So that's intentional. We want that money in there so we don't have to raise taxes when we have to add that next unit. Our library is right where we want it to be. General Fund is good. We, we have a lot of one-time savings, and with that interest income, we're at forty two percent, which is, is great. It gives us a little bit of insulation in case our sales tax doesn't come in as, as we thought it would. We're a good, strong, healthy balance. Municipal Services is also strong and healthy. Transfer Station, not quite as high as it has been in the past year or two, mostly because of money spent on capital repairs, capital improvements. We did paving, we bought some new equipment. The animal shelter is the one that, this is the first time now in four or five years that we've had any that's in that yellow category. The reason for that is we've just spent a lot of money, a lot of cash on repairs of that building, and also our costs are just up. It costs more to have employees. That's primarily what our expenses are out there. Dog food, cat food, and employees is essentially what we're doing out there to clean the shelters. So when you look at that and you see that it's in the yellow, I say that's when you're driving on the freeway to St. George, and you notice that you're almost out of gas, you need to start looking for a gas station right now. Once you hit it in the red, that's when your fuel lights come on. So we're not in trouble yet, but we need to make some decisions in this upcoming budget cycle as to what we're going to do to, to make sure that that's stable going forward. Any questions on that one? Are we okay?
So Scott, most of that, you think, came from capital improvements out there with the building and such, or?
Yeah, so we spent, we spent a hundred and nine thousand dollars on repairs to the, the air conditioning units this year. So it goes as, it's not an expense because it's an enterprise fund, so it just changes your cash to a capital asset. But this, this number represents our unrestricted or, or available cash.
That's our cash balance.
Yeah. So even though the expenses don't look like they've gone up a lot, it's because we're spending this money, we're capitalizing, and then we depreciate it over the life of that asset. So if this were a, if this were part of the general fund, you would see a huge loss this year in that fund. But because just because of the accounting of it, it gets capitalized and spread over the life, which again, I understand why they do that, but it also means we don't have much cash left in that fund. So part of what we do go through each year as part of our fund balance policy, we look at the next five years, and I estimate conservative revenue growth, and I estimate not conservative expenditure growth, so expenses growing faster than revenues. Even so, I think in the general fund, we are fine through two thousand and twenty nine, assuming everything stays as it is. Right? That could change the next time we have a pandemic. That can change the next time somebody flies a plane into a building. I mean, but as of right now, if we don't have any major changes, I don't see any, any need for adjustments in the, the general fund. Now, again, we talk about salaries and wages. We talk about things of that nature. This, this all assumes that everything operates as is this year. Paramedic Fund. Again, this is the one that has that hundred percent. Even through two thousand and twenty nine, I don't anticipate that we're even getting down into that idea of fund balance range. Again, we want that money saved for when we have to add it. So that's why we know this is high. We're intentionally keeping it high. Our library is right in the sweet spot. I think we're going to be stable there. This is one that anytime we're, we're in the green, I like to watch that just to make sure that we're not going off, you know, so we have enough of a fund balance in there that if there's any, you know, one-time expense, we're going to be okay. But we still want to just watch that one and make sure that we're watching revenues and expenses the last year or so. The expenses grew faster than their revenues, and its salaries and wages and its benefits, which is unfortunately one of the biggest expenses at the library. So they normally save a lot of money. They still save money this year, but just not as much as they normally do.
Well, and we've continued to use those other budget processes too, right? So that it would be in that way, you kind of work that out.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is in accordance with our plan. We just, just need to keep watching it. Our Health Fund. I'm not worried about this. So we, we anticipate a kind of a decrease down there. That's because I get some of these estimates from the Health Department, from the different departments to make sure that our, our estimates are right. And they always, they're very conservative there, and they plan for the worst. And if, if we were ever to start on that trajectory, we would make adjustments, you know, three or four years before that. So even though it looks like it's going to hit, you know, below our red line in two thousand and thirty, I'm not worried about it at all. Every year, the last few years, they've budgeted to lose money, and every year, the last three years, they've added money to their fund balance. So we're just watching that. We've tightened up our budget this year a lot to try to keep those estimates much more much more representative of what's actually going to happen. And so we've tightened that budget up as part of this last composition increase. So I'm, I'm okay with this. I'm not worried about this fund. And finally, the Municipal Services Fund. You can see, and actually, if I come out here, maybe if I show change that filter, show a few more years of, just want to show where we were to where we are. It'll think for me, come on. Well. Let's try one more time. Okay. This one shows, the other one showed from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty nine. This one shows from where we were. Twenty sixteen, if I can get it, two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty four. So this shows where we actually are. These are all actual numbers. You can see, if you remember back in two thousand and seventeen, I was in here saying, look, we really got to do something. Actually, in two thousand and sixteen, we were talking about the Municipal Services Fund, saying, we really got to fix this. Two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, we started making some changes, tightening the budget, and then also two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty one is when we had COVID and the sales tax revenue, and that, that's really helped our fund balance. So looking forward now, the next few years, I basically match revenues and expenses, and then I added more money for one-time infrastructure improvements. That's why you see kind of this gradual spend down. It's because I added money in the budget to fix a bridge, fix a road, do all these different things. If the revenues don't come in like we anticipate, then we won't do those projects. So this shows a slope down. It's because I engineered it that way. If the revenues don't come, we don't spend it. So we're not going to be in trouble in this fund, if that makes sense. Any questions on that? Sorry, what? Okay. Capital projects. So there's been some confusion on some of the numbers, and so I just want to clarify where we're at. So this is what we have in our Capital Projects Fund. There's seventy one point five million dollars in there right now, of which fifty one million dollars is reserved for specific projects, our, our capital projects plan. Of that fifty one million, we roughly want to keep about five million-ish or so. We don't want to spend all fifty one million because then the next time something breaks, we don't have any money to spend for it. So we said, all right, let's keep five, six million dollars in there as a contingency in case something breaks. So that means we have about forty five million dollars available for projects. So that's the forty five million dollar number that we talk about. Some people say, well, you've got seventy one million dollars in there. Yeah, I have seventy one million dollars in there, but I've got contracts signed for ten million dollars plus with our Ogden Nichols renovation, plus all these other things. So when you look at what we have on our capital projects list, now, this is not a prioritized list. I don't want anybody to think that this is the, the order that we're, we're doing them in. This is just me and my putting them on there in that order. We have a parking structure that we've committed to. We're estimating eleven million dollars. Sean, how I came up with this is I took the costs that we've got estimated, and I added a ten percent contingency to all of these things. So when you look down at like the Weaver Center remodel, I have a cost per square foot times the number of square feet times ten percent. Same thing with the Ice Sheet jail remodel. The jail remodel was the numbers that I got from the sheriff's office of thirty point eight million dollars, and then we add a, a contingency, ten percent, and so on. So you can see, you know, even if you scratch a couple of those off there and say, okay, well, let's not, let's not put the library on there. We're still at a hundred million dollars of potential capital project. Or let's scratch the Kiesel remodel. We won't need to do that. Okay, we're still at eighty five million dollars worth of potential projects. So we have forty five million. We have at least double that in projects, and there can be other things on the list besides this here. This is just, I'm going to be a sample of what big ticket items we have on there, but we could spend way more on that in the Golden Spike repairs if we wanted to. We could spend, we could spend all forty five million. We could spend, we could spend all forty-five million out there if we wanted to. There's, there's a lot of projects to be done. So at this point, the question is, is how do we want to prioritize our Capital Projects Plan? John, if you want to talk about a little bit, I went down to a training, we were talking about with other counties and how they do that. One of the models that I, I thought was interesting is Utah County's model. And Utah County funds all of their capital projects in year three. So they have a five-year plan and they don't add anything to their year one or two, they add it to year three. So let's say you wanted to do a Weaver Center, you would start funding that eleven million dollars, you'd program it to come out in year three. And then you'd spend your first year and your second year getting the design and getting the bids and getting all the costs and everything like that with the anticipation of starting three years after you say go on the project. If that makes sense, now that's not necessarily how we have to do it here. We do something similar with our Transportation Fund when people apply for our WACOG dollars. We fund them two or three years in the future because it takes them that long to get ready to actually start using the money. So that there's options like that that we can do, we just, we need to kind of figure out what the priority is on this. If we want to start working on them, then we can work on several projects at the same time. We just need to know which of these projects are the focus with that forty-five million dollars? Or how much do you want to put in each, each pot? Because what we don't want to do is start all of them and not be able to finish any of them, right? So, so really that's kind of the question and we'll talk more about that as we go through this summer and getting into our budget cycle for twenty twenty-five's budget. But our, our goal is to have this prioritized so that we know commissioners, what your priority is on the capital projects. And we prioritize them with enough time to actually get the design work done, get a bid out. Because we see bids come back sometimes twenty or thirty percent off from what we estimated the cost to be. You know, and if you have a thirty million dollar project that comes back at forty million dollars, we need a couple of years to plan to figure out how we're going to get the rest of that money or how we're going to value engineer it or what. So that's kind of where we're at with our Capital Projects and our fund balance and kind of summarizes the results for twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-four quarter to date, first quarter, I just went through really quick and looked at it. There's nothing that is a concern, nothing that I really think we need to bring up here. We're right in line with our budgets and projections. Sorry, Mr. Bond.
Please, Mr. Bond, go ahead.
You had called me a few days ago and asked for this type of reception to be had, which Scott just did over the last couple of minutes. I think the sheriff is online. If you want to have any comments or if you want to engage with, you know, a broader discussion about that point, which is what you asked me to, to include. And so Scott, I always put that at the end of his project presentation here. However, you want to proceed with the sheriff or any more discussion about this or time it or make other plans or I just, I think primarily our goal was to just get in front of you the forty-five million that we've been kind of speaking to for a number of months now has not really changed. It's just really a question of, as you went to Mill Creek and you had some, some different ideas on how to work on stuff in the back here with perhaps some ideas with Weaver State and Austin City. Skiff and how to prioritize perhaps a new set of decisions. And I, I think the sheriff had, I don't know if he has any comments, but just wanted to, to make sure that we were covering what you wanted to be covered so far.
Thank you. Before, before I asked for comments on Lon, Commissioners, I had made a, I had made a statement to the sheriff that the last time we had something like this, that there was likely, it seemed like there was thirty million dollars. And I said, well, what we need to do is maybe help you by going after that. But now I'm hearing there's only twenty million dollars of, of availability, at least in this presentation. I'm talking, what I'm trying to do is help facilitate him for his planning to build the facilities that they need out there at the sheriff's office. Do you have any recommendations that would help that? Or maybe Commissioner, I'd like to have some comments from you, Commissioner Bolos and you also Commissioner Fro regarding that.
Can I clarify the numbers? So forty-five million, if we leave five million in there, five, six million in there for a contingency. So that forty-five million, I think would.
Go back, if you would then, please, fairness from my mind, go back to the things that we've committed, we've got to do.
So, yeah, so this, this slide right here. So of that forty-five million, I think we came to that thirty million dollars because we said, okay, well, we're going to need about fifteen million dollars for our parking structure, so forty-five minus fifteen now here, I'm only showing eleven because we lowered the cost per stall from like thirty or thirty-five thousand to twenty-eight. I believe based on, I don't remember the exact numbers of the cost per stall, but based off of some updated information. And then the Weaver Center remodel, that could be fourteen million dollars, but it could be two million dollars. I mean, there's so much variability.
But it could be twenty million too.
It could be so. So when you say there's only twenty million left, I, I don't understand exactly where that numbers come from. We've got forty-five million to do a hundred and forty million dollars worth of projects.
We've got, we've got, okay. We've got forty-five million to do a hundred and forty million dollars worth of projects. Yeah, that's probably a good foundation to start. Commissioner Bolos, do you have any comments?
Well, my first comment is that if we have forty-five million, I think we need to prioritize these projects and not have any discussion about, about partial funding to any of them. That wouldn't make any sense. You mentioned that really briefly.
Well, when I say partial funding, so a Weaver Center remodel, depending on what we want to do, could be a small remodel or a huge remodel, right? So that's what I mean, like partially funding these projects.
You can't partial, partially fund jail remodel.
No, you can't.
He's got to, he's got to have more beds for medical and mental health patients in order to free up the beds that are being tied up. There's no way and, and to the sheriff's credit and his staff, they went from ninety-three or ninety-four, whatever it was we were asking for in the bond, you know, to down to a third by just the, the bare minimum of what they need. And I would really like to consider, consider that, consider their efforts because they, they really whittle it down. I think as commissioners, we have to prioritize the need and I mean, public safety is up there for me, that's no secret.
Thank you, Commissioner Fro.
Well, I thought when we met two months ago, that was pretty much the order that we decided. The parking garage, we're under contract, basically, under legal contract to do that.
Deadline for that?
There is. Yeah, May of twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
So May of twenty twenty-five, look, here and now. You know, unless, you know, unless we want to get in the legal battle with Austin, which I don't think we do at this point in time.
I don't want to spend any of this money fighting legals.
So we've got to do the, in my mind, we don't have a choice but the parking terrace. And that could easily be up to fifty, I mean, we look at eleven, could be fourteen, fifteen, who knows until you're better. And we looked at the opportunity to whatever we're going to do with the Weaver Center, the time to do that is when we do the parking terrace so you can handle those congruently.
Those are, that's the most efficient, right?
That's the most efficient, that's the way.
With regards to mobilization.
Yeah, so basically I'm looking at taxpayer dollars. So to make the most efficient, effective use, well, we've got to do the parking stall. Whatever we decide on the remodel, I mean, that could, that could be a four million, it could be whatever. And I know Sean and his crew are working on that as we speak. The ice sheet, you know, that's kind of the unknown equation again, I mean, we're hopeful we can get some money from the state, we know that we have at least what, three point eight or so up there for the cool, that we have to do.
It's for it to, for it to stay functioning, right?
So in order to keep that, so we've got, I'm going to say three point eight to five million based upon what happens with IOC. So, you know, that's the way I look at it, that's twenty, twenty-five million. Well, depending on where you are with the Weaver Center, you know, but pretty much to do anything, I think you're looking at twenty-five million. Would you take that away from your forty-five, that doesn't, that doesn't do much for the Weaver Center, it's just basically a a little bit of a facelift, but not much. So that might be your twenty million that you're talking about.
That's how I calculated it in my mind, so. But that's way based on your comments here right now, you know? I would love to see much-needed repairs to the Golden Spike, but I certainly would put that in back of the, the needs of the public safety. We have to maintain. If we don't do some of that stuff with the ice sheet, it shuts down. Yeah. You, you have to be able to make ice. And in order to do that, we have to put that money in. I mean, it's, that's, that's that simple. It closes down.
No, you won't have an ice sheet because you can't make ice.
And Weaver State hasn't agreed to take that on, which we would hope is another thing and so that, that.
Is that off the table completely now?
No, not off the table, but for today's planning and discussion, I don't think we can count on it, put it that way.
So even if, if we pared those down and I think, I think parking, even if you were to say, well, it's listed here at eleven and we used fourteen and then you're probably, we whittled down the fourteen, seven to five million and then the ice sheet was at five. What does that leave us, Scott? What do we?
So you'd be at twenty-one, twenty, let's just say twenty-two million dollars of your forty-five, so you'd have another twenty-three left.
At the most.
Most, I think, I think the accurate numbers would be if, if we leave off Golden Spike down, you're twenty to the most, twenty-three million.
So, so based on what you just said, how much money are we adding to this budget a year currently?
So we take our one-time payroll savings, we take our one-time, well, not just payroll savings, our one-time budgetary savings. And I think this year we've added three million or so dollars. We just don't count on that. I mean, so in historic, I would say we, we had three, three or four million dollars a year to our fund balance there. But I don't guarantee that. So I mean, we could say, if we're going to plan for this in year three, some of these things and stage them out three years. I'm not saying that we would do this with the jail and just say, let's just pretend the jail was three years out. Well, potentially we could build up some money, some fund balance to get to it in year three. So that's why we just need some priority as to which projects do we start today? Which projects do we start planning? Because even if we said go on the jail today, it's still going to take time to actually get the design all the way finished, then get it bid out, get a contractor selected and get mobilization. So if that's a year down the road and I don't know how long it will take, maybe we have added some more money to our fund balance in that time. But, but if I know that's what we're doing, we can plan for that, then we can, then we can save and build towards that plan, if that makes sense.
No, makes sense. No, I, I, so right there, if we just focused on those top four right there, it would just have to depend. You know, as we, we know that we have that deadline on the parking structure in a year, basically May of twenty twenty-five. So a year and a few weeks, even let's say left thirteen months. And if we, if we spend money wisely, so during that mobilization, we do the mid, the the remodel and we cut that down by set sixty-five percent from what it's estimated there and only use five million dollars. Take a huge haircut and then take a, and at least cut that ice sheet in half, maybe more. Cut those things in half and then give all the remaining money except for the five million dollar cushion towards something to do with public safety. We may have to design towards that, but at least it would show that we have a plan moving forward. About those are my thoughts on that. Any other comment, Commissioners on that?
I think that's, you know, so we need to get the numbers solidified on the parking terrace. Obviously, that's number one, we don't have a choice with that. Number two, I think we can make the decision on what does this remodel at the Weaver Center look like? Is it going to be a three million, five million, eight? So as we, as we start looking at that, and then I think we then get some answers on the ice sheet, which should come about here in the next two to three months as we meet with the Lippi Committee. Then we can, I, I like where you're headed with that. Then we say, look, we've got this gap to cover. You know, start the process for the sheriff with design and.
And maybe with, I don't know, that's. With the thirty-three that he's got there and I, and I always thought it was going to take thirty-eight or thirty-nine, but maybe that's just projections with inflation. But maybe even that project there could be phased. We could phase one, two or three, so we could start with a ten million base or a twenty million dollar phase two or something or phase three or phase four to get to the full thirty-eight or nine million dollars that it's going to require to do that. And keep in mind, in fairness to that project, that's the bare bones. I think the bare bones out there, there still needs to be more pods built out there.
Yeah, that's what I've heard for a really long time.
And could, but I still want to be conscious of that. And maybe that's on that list that we've got there.
Additional.
Well, additional contingency, just below the, for now, not, but the library, there's additional pods, I think would be wise to add another project there at the sheriff's office. And, and if the, if the delta on that, the difference between the two was another sixty million or something like that. Did you say the sheriff was online?
I thought he was. Was.
Sheriff, can you hear us? Are you online?
Yes, I am.
Oh, great. Would you mind, do you have a comment for us?
Anything particular? There's a lot that I could say, but I want to keep it specific and narrow if possible.
Please, go ahead.
So I'm out, I'm, I'm out of town right now. So I think I heard most of this, but there was a comment about phasing our current proposal with the jail. I don't think phasing that portion of the medical may help is an option. I just, I just don't think it is. On the bigger scale, the ninety-eight million we proposed in the bond, that could be done in phases, but I just don't think this one can. The medical, the mental health, the infirmary, they're all tied together. That's just every essential component is tied, it's important or priority for the other. I just don't think that is. I know that the Kiesel is something that's, we've had lots of debate on about other entities wanting it and tearing it down and so forth. But I do want to mention that three weeks ago in our jail, we had about eight to ten, those that were booked in that we did not have a vote for. And so we're looking at totally dismissing all of the marshals to make sure that we have that room. I know in past, our facility was the size that we could accommodate two hundred and fifty or so of the marshals, which brought in around. And Scott, you can help me on this, if you're listening. It was about seven million a year. And now we're down to a hundred. And at this pace, we're going to have to cut that out, so that's less revenue for the county. And we, we, we just, we just can't do this. We just can't get to a stage where we can't let people in our facility. So that's it in a nutshell. I could expand on others if you want to ask more questions or ask me specifically.
Thank you, thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate you being online and especially where you're trying to do two things at once, being out of town. Scott, what?
Commissioner, can I, can I add one more thing?
Go ahead.
On that latest cost from our engineer, or excuse me, the architect, that price includes everything. Anything that has to do with the road to make it work, the furniture, faucet fixture, that's not just a core, that price includes everything. So there's no additional surprises when we go to build.
What's, thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. What's that number again?
Thirty. Thirty point eight. Oh, million. And then Scott, I think in his earlier comments, added, added ten percent for contingency.
Yeah. Okay, and that's to account for difference between the design and the actual cost when we go out to bid. We, we just, we need that.
Well, that's being in, but being in building, that's what you do and that's more, you know, and that's just, that's a good safety net. So let's go back to.
Sorry, one more, Commissioner.
Okay, Sheriff.
Sure, let me just add this. We've got all the programming and the data and information to start to build with this, but for this thing to be completed optimistically, it's a year and a half from today's date. It's two years probably is what we're really looking to be completed, but that all depends on the start date. So that's, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Scott, at what point like on this whole thing, you know, if the sheriffs, sheriffs would have done quite a bit of those federal inmates? Isn't because of the, the revenue, but there's also some, there's also some expenditure as it relates to the federal inmates as well. I get that. But at what point, is there any way that we could say, hey, listen, we're going to do this medical piece and also maybe a pod and bond against the revenue from the federal, federal inmates to with that revenue to pay the finess piece on the bond?
So we've looked at that and, and the reason why you don't see a lot of people going out and building jails just to contract with the feds because they don't make money. How the feds are, how we're able to contract our extra spaces is we build a facility of eight hundred beds and we only need six hundred of them on average. And so we have those extra two hundred beds. Now, I'm just rounding some numbers, you never want to get to full capacity. But you have that extra bed space that you've already built, you don't have all those capital facility costs. All you have to really do is cover the cost of the healthcare and the, and the food and the guards. But to build a brand-new jail and have all that depreciation. So you think when we did this last bond in twenty years ago, it was a general obligation bond. So the sheriff's office didn't pay the cost of the jail, right? It was a bond that was paid for by the taxpayers with the direct, direct levy on the tax number. So you never saw the cost of the bond in the sheriff's operating budget. So when you build all these costs to cover your costs of having inmates, it never includes the cost of that capital. So that's, that's why if, if it did, then you'd have all these companies that would go out with much cheaper labor costs than us, build contract facilities and have the, the feds, you know. Build contract facilities and have the, the feds, you know, contract US Marshals to house their inmates. You just don't make money on it.
Okay, I get that. But one of the things that Weaver County enjoys that the private doesn't is we've already got a base and a foundation in place. We've already got a lot of people there working. That's already in place. How do we find a way to say yes to this? How do we find a way to not? Build a brand-new jail, but to build, I guess, I'm getting hung up a little bit on that word, not build a brand-new jail, but just expand what we have. In a way that we can bring in those revenues from the federal government. And then though with those revenues. Uh, bond against that, to be able to then, which would then pay that, how do we do that? How do we, how do we say yes to that?
I don't know of a way where we're going to be able to get enough revenue to cover the additional expenses. So if we're going to expand the jail and get the, the medical pod and the medical facilities. We're going to have to use our cash, whether we issue a geo bond and have the citizens pay a director, or whether we use the cash that the counties. Collected, um, in our fund balance, it's going to cost money. There's really no way to get this to be paid for by somebody else. Now, we could build extra capacity and then try to bond for that extra capacity. I don't think that the numbers would pencil, but we could, we could try that. But.
I'd like to at least say we went down that rabbit hole.
So we went, and we calculated the cost of an inmate without the depreciation of the building, and then we added the depreciation, and I, and I'll have to pull up the numbers. But Sheriff, if, if you're here, I believe it was like a hundred and forty dollars per inmate per day just to break even. And if we wanted to have the depreciation cost, it was like a hundred and eighty dollars. Per inmate per day, the marshals are paying around a hundred.
Oh.
So we're, we're not, we're not that close. And, and it makes sense because they're buying excess capacity.
Right.
That's how they, they, they're able to do this, is the, the marshals and the state buy excess capacity in jails. They don't buy brand-new facilities. They buy just that excess capacity where they've already got the jail and the bed and everything in place. All they need to do is pay for the extra food and the extra time for the guard.
It just happens to be empty.
Yeah.
That space, room with the inmate.
Got it.
Yeah. So, so I guess that's a good way to say it. It's building a new hotel versus just discounting your, your empty beds to get them filled.
Well, this goes back to what. I think we did back in two thousand fourteen or fifteen, when the state put the guaranteed rate out there. And you had two or three counties that thought they were going to be able to build their facilities and build those on the backs of the state. Revenue. And guess what? They went bankrupt. There's not enough money at eighty bucks. Same story, eighty bucks an inmate when it costs you a hundred and eighty to, to house them.
So the depreciation, a hundred ninety.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So. But when you could, so what we're really talking about is you're looking at a bond. That you put on the back, so you're looking at a tax increase. So this could be, this could happen, but you got to go to the well.
I got it. Raise taxes.
Tax increase to do it.
And, and it brings up the question, is it fair to make Weaver County taxpayers pay so that we can house. Marshall inmates at a cheaper rate than what the feds could? I mean, why isn't Weaver County, if they were all Weaver County inmates?
Yeah.
And they just happen to be charged to the marshals, which there are some that are like that. Okay, I get that argument, but. We don't want to bring inmates from all across the state that aren't Weaver County inmates and then. Charge our taxpayers so that the marshals can get a cheaper rate.
That makes sense.
That's what they're doing.
Do we know the percentage of Weaver County inmates, uh, in the federal inmates that are actually from Weaver County?
It, it's a high number right now. It's, I can't remember exactly the number, but I believe it was like the eighty-plus percent.
So might as well just, I mean, that's a benefit, right?
Right.
Because we're going to be housing them anywhere.
Well, maybe, maybe.
But these are the highest level offenders that we really have to concern.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah, that's another.
Hey, uh, there's. This, uh, Sheriff, there's a lot that I can address here to clear some of this up. So don't forget me. I, I'd like to address some of that that was just shared.
Well, go ahead and make your comment, Sheriff.
Okay, so the sheriffs philosophically, what they believe is they want to build for the future. And so a lot of them will upsize their facilities twenty to fifty years out. And what they do is they know that a jail has to be manned, if you will, uh, with, if you have. Five inmates in a pod or two hundred and fifty. And so the theory is, is we'll just build the pod, and then once that, uh, if it's not billed, then they put it in with the offset of money from the marshal. And that's the way it is in our facility, uh, you know, when, when, uh, years ago, we. Built on a, a larger scale, knowing that we'd grow into it in the future. And then the numbers of the marshals and others would just dwindle down. And so that's the theory behind that, is why they build them larger, and then the costs are offset. To the taxpayer through revenue through the marshal's office. Uh, it's talking with, uh, Gage, you may remember this guy, Representative Hutchins. Uh, when they, uh, came up with the rate from the state, how they figured it is. How they figured the rate is they considered any money the state is giving to the county jails, and his quote, his words were gravy. And so, and it goes back to the theory, the jail has to be manned anyway. So we're going to give this county's a cheaper rate. That to them. Is in their mind profit, and it's really not. But it does help out, offset a lot of the costs. And so that's what we're looking at right now. We're, we're looking at. Reducing the marshal inmates, that's going to reduce revenue. But we're going to build this, a medical and mental health, and in a couple of years. Uh, maybe five, we're going to have to build another extension of the facility. And how big is going to be determined on our numbers, but to help offset some of those costs. It's going to be a different, that's what Scott Park and I have been working on the last several months.
So what I hear you saying, Sheriff, is that you have a thirty million dollar need today. And a thirty million dollar need in two years, and another thirty million dollar year need in two more years.
So ye- ye- yes, no. So the medical help, the numbers that we provided with the architect and with the data that we received from the state, county. And other entities, we programmed medical to help. Two, twenty-five plus years out. So that position, that is out, but as far as the pods. And the work release, the, the, the problem that we're having with the work release is we don't have a work release facility per se available. And so a lot, when the prosecutors go to work, that's not a tool to use. So it's either probation or incarceration. And so the original plan was a long-term plan with incorporating, uh, work release, but that's not an option right now, or at least. Through the bond, we're out that we had planned, but the medical mental health is now and, and, uh, it's beyond the need now, but it's also for about twenty-five years out or more. Does that help?
It helps. Thank you.
So in other words, we should not need another medical mental health expansion for that long, but we will need housing. Uh, in quick, uh, time.
That's, I, I, that's the way I understood it when I said it, but thank you for clearing that, clarifying.
Yep. Yep.
Um. So the avenues to be able to say yes to this. Uh. Say it straight. That means either we go out and we ask the people again. Like the sheriff did this last time, we go out again and, uh, and like the library did, uh. Uh, they had to go to the well twice, they had to put that on the ballot twice, the library did. Would that, would that be the avenue, or do we just, uh? Uh, the tax increase, or, I mean, that, that, then the people, that's not a guarantee either, a tax increase, but that's what we're saying.
So.
It's more money on the backs of the Weaver County taxpayer. And I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
Either way you're looking.
The, the real answer is, it, it just depends on what you want us to do first. So if you want, let's just, let's just, I'm throwing numbers out. This is not, this is just me spitballing. Thirty-four million dollars goes to the sheriff's office and he starts construction tomorrow. So now of that forty-five we had available, we, we've just spent thirty-four. So I've got eleven million left, and I give it to Sean for the parking structure. And then I have that six million dollars of contingency, and I start to use that and try to scrape other funds together. To fund some repairs to the ice sheet so that we can at least keep. Um, the ice sheet making ice. Uh, we're going to have to phase this, so the sheriff doesn't need all thirty million dollars today. So I can start working with John Bonner, we can cash flow, and we can start to get some of these projects in there, and in the meantime, hope that we gather a little bit of money. So we can start working on this and make this. Work if you can tell us what the priority is and about what budget you want to give for each one of these things. So. Uh, a five million dollar remodel versus a fifteen million dollar remodel, that's. That's a big difference in the calculus as John and I get together and try to cash flow these out. So. If you tell us right now, this is priority number one, this is priority number two, and this is priority number three, and here's the amount of money we want to give to each one of those. We'll go back and present to you a plan on how to make it work.
The thing that you add to this discussion, as you have been, is to say, okay, if we don't have enough funds based on priorities. Do you want to go out and bond? There aren't any other options to save. The Mill Creek thought where you give up the property in the back, we call that equity. And you bring a private person in to develop in the back, and they offer you because of your equity. So many stalls. It's an interesting concept, and if you want to pursue that. And then have Weaver State or whoever come into that agenda also in some form or fashion. Just fold them in. But it really, really boils down to, hopefully this discussion will lead to you over the next short period of time. Really settling on a priority, the timing, and a dollar amount. And if you need more information about that, let's help you get to that point.
That all sounds really good, what you just said, all, all of you. They're both a good whatever.
Commissioner, may I, may I add one thing with the parking structures? Well, that. Number that Scott has put out there, four hundred stalls that addresses the county's need. That is not for anyone else, right? Not Weaver State, not anybody else that has expressed interest. So that's the baseline, four hundred stalls to meet our needs.
So, so in theory, we shouldn't be paying more than that anyway, right? Because if we're helping out another entity with their stalls, we would be collecting from them.
That's correct.
Yeah, the county.
So that's our commitment.
The county may take the role of being in charge.
Sure.
And funding the whole darn thing.
But that's our financial commitment.
But we would have to charge anybody else that had parked in there or had access. Enough to pay offset the, the costs.
But, but keep in mind, it would be our, if we're going to own the facility, which we want control of. We upfront the money, but then we generate the revenue from some type of lease. So we're, we are getting paid back on lease revenue.
Well, over time, you're right, twenty, so twenty-one million, let's say, or twenty-two million now has gone out for the parking structure.
Right.
And over the next ten years or twenty years, I get paid back that eleven million. So that, that's the cash flow that we're talking about. We need to figure out.
Yeah.
What the priorities are and how to do it.
And this is all, so let me go back to before you made your comment, Commissioner Bullis. This is all fine and dandy, and we're talking about phasing these things over the next two or three years. And that, that, that's all good, but the one thing he just said. Which I, which I agree with, but he's going to need more rooms right after that. And so as soon as we get done, and let's say this all blossoms perfect. It all worked out great. We're going to be looking straight in the gun barrel. For another thirty million dollars to build more rooms right then. And we don't, we won't have it. We're not at the growth that you're projecting. We won't have that money. I'm, I, it, it's all great to answer the questions today. I'm trying to think about two or three years from now, too, to be smart about this. That's where I, I want to get to. And it goes back to where we, we always like setting the things up so it's. You know, if it's a tax increase, it's a little bit, not a huge lump sum. Because if you go back at thirty million dollars, that's a huge, that's going to be a huge lump sum. I don't want to do a tax increase. We just, we just had to do one, and all the while, here's the thing that's going to trump all. Seven of those right there. Eight, because you didn't put a priority sword on that number last one. We got to take care of our employees. And that's going to be around the county, including public safety. And that's going to come above. Any parking stall or mental health unit at the sheriff's office, the employees got to come first. That's going to come first in my book. I'm going to always vote to take care of them first. So however that works.
I think what we saw back in January, February, and March was the movement toward this conclusion, and Mill Creek did add some new information to it. But added a different way of looking at developing the back. And so that also is part of this discussion is to say, how do you feel about that? But that also folded in Weaver State into a possible skip here in this block. And so bringing all that together. We're just hoping, and I think, Commissioner, what you were asking for this to be on this topic was today, was to say. How do we refresh these discussions, put into play meetings or information so that in the next short period of time? Two or three or four months, whatever, you guys have enough information, you can make informed decisions. You set that priority, you set the timing, you set the dollar amounts, you project out what will be in the next three to five, seven years, you add that to your plan. You figure out how to, how to phase it in, how to pay for it, which is, do you bring a developer in? If not, we'll do it ourselves. If you use the forty-five, which has been a pretty constant number for the last several, several months, if you use that forty-five as a point of reference. What's your priority? And, uh. So there are some significant decisions. How do we help you get in the next month or two or three? To a, a good, this is our plan.
Yeah.
Commissioner, Fisher Harvey, can I add something?
Yes, but just a moment, please. I'll come to you in a moment. Go ahead, Commissioner Bullis.
What I need to make that decision is I need, need, need to understand more about the remodel. I understand, Commissioner, for, um, talking about the efficiency of building that together with the parking stalls, but I'm now hard time going to the public and saying. We want to remodel our office building. Ahead of public safety. That's going to be a hard sell. If we're turning inmates away because we don't have bed space for them, but we want. And I know that we want to make it more functional, and we want to make it work with the parking garage and stuff, but if I'm just a regular Joe taxpaying citizen, I'm going to say. Build your parking spots and then take care of these inmates that I don't want on the streets. I need to understand more about that. About, I mean, you've taken it down to four point nine from, what was it?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Yeah.
I, I, I have to understand that because that is a hard sell for me to say. We're prioritizing, we're prioritizing a re, it's, it's just the optics of it. We, we want to remodel this building, but we can't build enough medical and mental health space to keep. Inmates in the jail. We're going to turn them away. How do you, how do you sell that to the public? So that's, John, when you ask, what do we need? That's what I, that's what I need.
Well, it's, 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 and it's, I see what you're saying there. If I'm going to go, I'd like to go to you, Commissioner Ford, in a minute, but keep in mind. It's mental health today.
Oh, I know.
It's pod tomorrow, and it's another pod the next day. That's, so it's thirty, it's thirty, thirty, thirty. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, and I don't disagree with what you're saying, but that doesn't add beds. That's for medical and mental health.
Well, it adds, it adds beds, because right now those mental health patients are, are staying in two bed cells. With no one else.
Yeah.
So there's an empty bed. Every time there's a, there's a mental health inmate, you have an empty bed in all those cells. That frees up beds. So. So it, I, I mean, that's why they've turned people away recently. I think you said eight inmates that they, or eight people they turned away. That's why, because you have, you have an individual in a cell with an empty bed. So it, it does free up beds. Um, you know, to house those inmates.
Well, I guess we can have that discussion. To me, the main. The main objective, the priority has to be the parking terrace, because we're all going to do that. And then what, how we split the rest, I think. We need to have the answers on the parking terrace first, whether we bring in. Um, a developer to help us with that, that needs to still be answered, the Mill Creek model. But to me, that's number one, and then we can debate over the next, what, six, twelve months, I guess.
Can I clarify that, Commissioner Ford? So I, I don't think the parking terrace number changes, does it? Because if we have partners in that.
We go from four hundred to eight hundred to take care of the skip and others, we upfront that money.
We upfront it.
I'd probably go and borrow it, and then I'd have to get it back from whoever released stalls to.
But the commitment, the, the commitment out of our pocket, I understand what you're saying, but the commitment out of our pocket theoretically wouldn't change. Eleven point six, that's what we need.
Well.
So that's what we.
Where'd you come up to eleven six? I, you know.
So that is.
Let's, let's not be putting numbers in there. We can't back up.
So that's four hundred stalls at twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars a stall. That gives you ten point six million dollars, and then you have the ten percent.
But we don't know for a fact that twenty-six is the number. We think somewhere between twenty-six to thirty. It could end up thirty based upon.
It could end up thirty-four, because, so we, we look at this and we actually lowered this down because it wasn't fifteen before, and then we got. I can't remember the name of, who, who comparable just did this. We used their number for their cost per stall.
Right.
But you're right, all of these are just estimates. And so if you fund the parking structure, that's why I'm saying, you know, if we do this funded two years out. We've got time to actually go do a, a study, get the design done, get this, their design bid out, so I know actual dollars.
I just don't, I don't want these numbers locked in.
Yeah.
And then have this thing come back at fifteen million and go, well, you know, why are we, if that's priority, we need to make sure we've got enough in the pod to fund that.
And that, that can happen with any of them, right?
Whatever that is, yeah.
All of them are going, are going to fluctuate from our estimate.
Which is why, that's, that's why I talked, I mentioned earlier that potential model of let, okay, this project we're going to fund, and it's going to be funded. Two years from now or three years from now, we have all that time to work, get the actual costs, and then reconcile the actual cost to the budgeted costs. Figure out how to finance the shortfall. And we, we have, you know, enough time to do that. My only fear would be is if we went out and said, okay, start all these three projects now based off of this budget. And I carry your forty-five million, and it comes back at fifty-five million, where do we get the extra ten?
That's right.
You know, I mean, we've got some in the contingency that we could use, but okay, I'm still sure. You know, I mean, we've got some in the contingency that we could use, but okay, I'm still short five million bucks.
Yeah, Sheriff Harv, but go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, you made a comment about, um, having to build a pod and then a pod again. If you recall that the ninety-eight million dollar bond that we proposed i- in that presentation, an additional pod, uh, uh, hard sells, if you recall, they were seven to nine years out because the plan included a, a work release facility. If we had the, the work release facility that the prosecutors could use, that would reduce the need for building hard sells. And then so as you recall that in that proposal on the bond, there was no new, uh, pods, if you will, for that. It was the medical, mental health. It was a restructuring the inside so we could accommodate court appearances and a work release center. And that's pretty much what it was. And so we don't need a pot. I'm just saying if we continue the path that we're on, we don't address work release, then yeah, we will need pods. And that leaves Kiesel. Kiesel's the, the big elephant. It's the variable that we're struggling all to deal with. We don't know to tear it down or keep it, remodel it or what. But, but that's our issue. I just want to make sure that's clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I don't have a definite today. John, you've got us off on a very good discussion here today. I'd like, we were going to need to revisit this again because we're, we, if we stop this now, we're basically going to. We don't have a way to go move forward right yet.
Every month it seems to be recycled into just the same variables. If you want to have put together a group that brings the commission data. And you review it once a month and you just keep updating that data and your decision or how we'd like to proceed. So what do you think?
We, we're happy and we're able to work on this and, and cash flow. Once we know exactly which, once we know what you would like to do. And I think that's just really kind of where we're at right now is we just need the commissioners to give us a staff some direction. And we can go out and we'll figure out how to do it. If, if the parking structure is the biggest thing, we need to figure out whether we're building an eight hundred stall or a four hundred stall. Because that has a big calculus on, on the cash flow and the timing of the cash flow. Um, so we just need to know that if, if we want to say maybe the remodel gets moved off, all we're going to do is hook the parking structure to the building. That's good to know, that potentially saves that cost. But I mean, do we still want to look at it? I hate to spend ten million dollars in two years if we could have spent two million dollars in one year. You know what I mean? So we, we just want to look at it.
That's the point, yeah.
Yeah, but, but at a certain point I do, we can't afford to do all these projects and, and we're going to have to make some decisions. We could lower the contingency amount down from five million to three million. We could, um, I mean, there's, there's lots of things that we can do.
That doesn't do you much good.
No, but there, I mean, there's things like that we can do. If, if we get this direction, we can start working towards the plan. We can cash flow over five years instead of three years, you know what I mean? Maybe as long as the ice sheet's band-aided enough that we don't have to do eleven million, we can get by with three million. And then we redo the locker rooms in three years and then we redo the, the other stuff in another three years. I mean, we, we can plan all that out as long as we know kind of what the priorities and how you want us to proceed.
Uh, Commissioner Frowe, and then I'll go to you, Commissioner Bowles. Do you have any thoughts on how to proceed?
Well, so Sean and his team have been working with E D A and working, so, you know. Behind the scenes, there's been a lot happening with the parking terrace. We're ready to, we'll be ready to send an RFP to three or four developers so we can see if the Mill Creek model will work. So we need to at least see when those numbers come back before we make. If we can get the developer to come in and produce the revenue for those extra four hundred stalls, whatever that may be. Then that's a big, that's a game changer.
Huge game changer.
So we, uh, to me, to make a decision, we've got to let Sean and his guys basically find out about the developer. Find out how many stalls that will be paid for by outside. We've got a piece of dirt out here that, you know, that could easily be a, I don't know, three to four million, maybe five million dollar differential based upon how that works, that is equity that I, you know, can go into that parking terrace, it could go into the remodel. So to me, that we've got to, we've got to finalize what we're doing there first. And then whatever funds we've got left over, which I am optimistic that we'll have, you know. If we can bring in that third party, will be beneficial to the rest of these projects. If we can use outside capital. But we've got to do an RFP. We've got to find out exactly what we're looking for and what they're looking for before we can answer that question. So I don't think putting a group together, I think we just let Sean continue to do what he's doing right now.
Sure. Which means it delays some of the others, but that may be how it is. But Commissioner Bowles, what do you have comments there?
I'm just going to add one thing to, to what the question you asked. And that is to find out about the ice sheet renovations and how that can be phased. Because you mentioned locker rooms, we were talking about ice making. I know it includes some other things that maybe aren't top priority.
I think, I think just, I can speak to part of that. One of those is it can't be phased. It's a geothermal something or other, three point eight with the, it's four point something million dollars. That, that has to do with the making of ice and, and, and nothing to do with locker rooms.
Sure, but if, if that, if that number includes other things other than, than the ice, look. Locky lo, uh, locker lobby and tickery model, that kind of stuff, there we are.
I asked them three weeks ago to finalize the number for me. They gave me a number close to five million dollars. If they could get that, it would at least be that first phase. And then they would go from there. But that, that almost five million was their initial comment to me about three or four weeks ago.
Is that, that's what you just pulled up?
Yeah, this was the detail, the last detail. Now, I don't have John's five million dollars, so this is the one I got before that, which was ten million dollars.
That's what I was looking for right there.
Yeah. I, I don't know if the five is first two.
Two point eight, it's line, line number twenty-one.
Okay, two point eight and the, this one or this one right here?
I believe.
Okay.
So we're at five point three.
So it's around five, that's kind of the number that you've been bound to, five million.
So if you got the five there, if Sean continues with his RFP, that may take two or three months to get that out. Get understood, get it out and get it back and reviewed. That would be probably through the process. So, um, we can firm up the ice sheet, which is fine. The RFP on the thing in the back, probably two to three months.
I, I'd say two to three months.
Yeah, we can do that. There's a study on Kiesel being done right now.
And there's a study on Kiesel being done.
So, yeah.
I, we should know on the ice sheet, I think that we're on the schedule, what, for June for interim?
Um, well, not yet. They're, they, they haven't released an, an interim, but we're working on getting on their interim.
We, we're pretty optimistic, at least on some suggestions that we've made that we can get.
The two point eight.
We can get two point eight or so from the state. They're sitting in an account for I O C. So we're working on that over, I'm going to say by the end of June. Uh, I don't send interim, so we can come back. If we can cut that two, two point eight out of the five billion, I mean, that's a pretty good start right there.
And that was actually, that was actually allocated to us.
Right.
And it's in their audit, so we just have to figure out how to claim it and Gage and I are working on that. Okay, thank you.
If I could be so bold as to look at this remodel on this building and say, should we continue to look at thirty million dollar model plans? Or should that be reduced to a much lesser amount, five million or ten in that range? So the architect does not continue to make plans on that thirty million dollar.
I think we've already given him that instruction, haven't we, John?
Say that one more time.
Haven't, we've already told him to kind of scale it back to see, you know, like in a five million, ten million dollar range.
Which, what do you remodel?
On the remodel.
On this building, yes, yes. So, and Commissioners, that one completely depends on you. So if you tell us that we're not remodeling, that's fine too. We're running out of space in the building and that's the real reason for the remodel.
Right.
So that, that's all there is to it.
Okay. So there's that. I'd like you to be so bold. So it looks to me like we're going to need to set up, but we need to revisit this thing in two to three months after these things have happened.
So if you're okay with the commissioners, as part of our pre-budget hearings, we can meet in August. Hopefully we'll have all the answers back by then and then have a summary meeting in August. And then we'll have our budget hearings, usually the last week of September, the first week of October. So we can give you a kind of an update and, and a preliminary plan. And then we can go out and have some time to actually work on an actual plan from the preliminary plan and present that to you in the budget cycle.
Would that, that be okay? Was there any possibility of doing that early August instead of late August?
Surely if you tell us a date, we'll.
Well, I'd like to set a goal on the first of August to just, because the longer we wait, if this ends up working out good for public safety, I'd like to get them started as soon as possible.
And that was my next question. What is the message that the sheriff today as far as how his plans or his expectations would, would be over the next three months?
Uh, do you keep, my, my thing is, is would be to keep refining what he's got. Be a solid, because if, if money ends up coming up, then we hope he can just push the button and he can go.
But I think it sounds like with the, with you guys meeting with the legislature. And I, I mean, that's, that's a big piece of it. With the RFPs for the space behind this building. I think that's the timeline we have to give to the sheriff because those are the answers we have to have before we can.
I agree.
Give him a message.
Those are, those are, oh, I agree with that. Sheriff, did you copy that? If he's still on. He may not still be on.
So I, I, I did copy and in our language, ten-four.
Could I, could I ask a quick question? I know we're over time, but would it make sense to allocate a little bit of money to have the jail remodeled? Fully designed to the point where we could bid it out? Because I don't know where it's at now, it's probably only the thirty percent design and.
Yeah, I don't even know.
I don't even know if it's out of thirty percent of the design. Because this new one, because if we do that and actually go out and get it designed, we'll know what we can bid it out and we'll know the cost. Because that's, that in my mind is the big elephant in the room. Because we're saying thirty million dollars and it could be thirty-five and it could be twenty, well, it could be twenty-five. But I mean, it could be forty million dollars. I'm not, I'm.
That's a great idea, Commissioner Bowles.
I agree with that. We, then we can at least, but what we're doing though is committing to him that we're prioritizing. And I'm not saying prioritizing number one, but I'm saying we're let, if we're asking him to get the full design, we're letting him know that we're going to find a way to make that work.
Well, eventually it's going to work.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, it makes sense. Commissioner Frowe?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I'd also say if we're going to do that, when it comes time, we need to prior, we need to do the same thing on the parking terrace. And on the remodel so that.
And on the ice sheet.
And on the ice sheet. So I'm going to say if we're going to do that one, we ought to do it with all four. So fund the designs? Yeah. Uh, and, and I'm happy to get the, the sheriffs because we know what that scope is. The ice sheet will get the remodel or the five million dollar number and we could start down that road. I don't know what to fund yet on the parking structure because we don't know what we're designing yet. So I would say if you give us a couple of months. Well, I'm saying, once we know whether it is four hundred or eight hundred, that's when we pull the trigger. Well, I think we should do that on all of them.
Makes sense.
I do, I agree. So the only problem with that is that once you, like you talk from experiences, what happened to the state is that you walk in and say, here, I've got plans ready to go. Sometimes they don't even have plans, by the way. They had rolled up.
I know, I know.
Rolled up pieces of paper, they, they were hoping we wouldn't open.
Then it means something, is that what you're saying?
So I want to just be clear, I'm okay with that. But I think we need, we're going to do that for one, we need to do that with all four. And then we have an idea on numbers, but we should get it. I would like a cost estimate on what those designs are. We can probably do that on the sheriff. Obviously, we can't do that yet on the parking terrace. I'll work with the sheriff offline and see if we can get a bid to, to design it all the way out, a hundred percent design and see what that cost is and we'll bring it back to you. Um, because we likely pull it from the capital projects, but I don't think the sheriff has it in his budget, assuming, you know, it's not. I, I don't know how much it's going to cost, but I assume it's going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars. Okay? Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so that, that's the direction I'd like you to go, get going. Thank you, John. Thank you, thank you.
Well, we're right on schedule.
We're only an hour behind.
Hey, at least we're not in a Republican state party.
That was true.
Let's see, where's Bill Olton at, Neil?
Oh, he only had a three hour date.
Okay, you know, Commissioners, I, I know that we're behind. Uh, I'd like to have, entertain a motion to saunter for just a couple of minutes to take care of a couple of personal items and.
So moved.
Okay.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, for those online and in the room, we're going to saunter for just a couple of minutes. We'll be back, well, in just a few moments. We've made a motion, just made a motion to cease the saunter. We're back on. We need to get this off the screen, uh, Scott Park.
All right, go ahead.
Throughout throughout the quarter, uh, we present budget changes to the commission. I either through paper or electronic means for your approval. So all of these on this list you've seen before. They've um, been approved uh, in the interim and this meeting. Consolidate all of these budget changes, bring them together so that we can present them in a public um, hearing, which is required, which is our practice. So if you have any questions on what's up on the screen, as I mentioned, you've seen all of these before. Um, they're just uh, in consolidated form here today.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair. I've got a motion to approve. I've got a second.
It'll be presented in a public hearing. We just like to have, if you have any questions on it, so we'll present it in the public hearing. There's no motion necessary.
Okay, fine.
Good.
Very good. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we're gonna move on to item three on our agenda, which is a discussion regarding the Nordic Valley PID governing document and CRA application. We have Ms. Stephanie Russell, Scott Park, John Baum, Sean Wilkins, Stephanie Ebert, Brandon Quinney. We have some members of the public here. Remind me your name.
Brennan Brown, D A Davidson.
Brandon Brown.
The ID expert.
If you'll just introduce yourselves, uh, just for the record, well. Are are there any, are are you any part of this Nordic Valley this part?
Yeah, yes.
Go ahead.
Shane doesn't leave.
Eric, speak up back there, don't just sit there.
Ambassador of Entertainment.
Yes, we love that.
Gary Myers.
I'm just.
Listen.
Rick Hall.
Bob Dollar.
And Sean Arwin.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jackson. All right, go ahead. I'm gonna turn the time over to Ms. Russell.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Um, uh, we are at the point with this project where we have been running the PID creation process. Alongside of the CRA process. Um, this project has some significant infrastructure lifts. Um, that are in the development agreement and so it warrants uh, falling under uh, the potential for the county to create a. Public infrastructure district to help um, with some of that, uh, with some of the development agreement uh, infrastructure list that. We've put into that agreement. So I wanted to give you an update on where we're at with the PID creation process. We are at the point in the process where we are. Um, we have just. Gotten finished negotiating the governing document. The governing document is really the catalyst to how the PID is created and what terms and conditions the county uh, has put on to. Uh, the Public Infrastructure District Board, uh, relative to the creation of a PID. Um. The creation of the governing document falls within our uh, Public Infrastructure District policy and as well as our local policy, as well as the state policy. Um, inside the PID governing document, um, we have a lot of uh, of benchmarks, terms and conditions that. That are to be met by the Public Infrastructure District as it relates to county policy and state statute. Uh, so our team, our Economic Development Finance Committee, as well as our finance. Team, which includes Gilmore Bell, they assist us in the development of the governing document, has met with our legal team and gone back and forth. Uh, for a couple of drafts and we have a final draft that we are presenting to you today. And I'll let uh, Mr. Quinney speak a little bit about that final draft.
Have we provided a copy of that, Commissioners? Okay, so uh, Commissioners, I'll just go over some of the. The major terms and um. Really only doing that because we have followed a certain template over the last couple of PIDs we've created. Um, one in the Snow Basin area and one in the Promontory Commerce, so Western Weber County. Area, um, this one will be, of course, in the Nordic Valley, uh, Nordic. Near Nordic Valley Resorts, ski resort. Um, what's that called now? Sorry, Wolf, is it Wolf Mountain? Nordic Valley now?
You got it.
I haven't skated in years, so obviously I need to.
Let us clarify, it is Nordic Valley.
Nordic Valley, okay. Um, so with this one, we have just a few terms that are a little different from. Previous versions and it's really only as as we learn about public infrastructure districts, we we put some new terms in place to kind of help. Clarify um, where ownership goes and and the timing of that ownership. So in here, we have. Uh, certain boundaries that we've set as the total. Public Infrastructure District area, but we are only starting with three kind of postage stamp districts, a three step of public infrastructure districts. Very small in size. They will be annexed as the development builds out and that will kind of fill in a total area. Um, oh, a- as the project gets to full build, it's about five hundred and eleven, five hundred and twelve acres of undeveloped land. For now, um. And then, uh. Within there, they have a maximum mill levy, um, it's at, seems at point. Is it five mils? Five mils is what we've determined is the maximum mill levy.
Which is the county's cap.
Yeah, it's something we've done with all our other public infrastructure districts, so no nothing really changed there.
I remember that with the other ones. That's pretty high, though.
Yeah, so the maximum you can do is fifteen mil.
Okay.
Um, by state statute. We we've cut that into a third, just to be a little more conservative and I've kept that in practice so far. Um, we also have here, uh. Assurances that the local districts or at least the local agencies, government entities will. Will be ready to accept the infrastructure that's being built, uh, before we. Create the Public Infrastructure District and even in cases where the Public Infrastructure District is created and some uncertainty. Or unseen foreseen event happens where a local agency can't take the the. Infrastructure, um, there's an assurance here that there will be no debt issued until. Some local district or um, government agency has signed an agreement to accept the infrastructure. So that kind of allows some assurance that. Over the course of twenty years, thirty years or so, somebody's going to be ready to accept that infrastructure in the public realm. So it will be built private, built by the Infrastructure District and then sent off to a sewer district, park district.
And just just to kind of piggyback on what Quinney's saying. This, before we even go into the creation process, you're just doing, we're just at the governing document process. Before we go into full creation. There's several steps in our in our process that we require and that does require that we have interlocal agreements. From those entities saying that they will take those, those uh, those assets, whether it be roads, sewer, whatever infrastructure the PID is creating. The PID's uh, only in, isn't created in perpetuity, it's there as a finance mechanism to get the project started, get the infrastructure in. And then gift those, uh, amend it, those infrastructure pieces over to a governing body. So just to make sure you have an assurance that we changed our policy and our processes so that. That is all taken care of before it goes to public hearing, before it gets announced. All of those steps are taken care of, including the survey, uh, the area survey.
Couple more things to note as well is, uh, this governing document doesn't completely control the Public Infrastructure District. They are their own separate legal entities. They will be taking on full liability of all this financing.
They're their own separate political entity.
Exactly, so whatever debt they issue is the responsibility of the Public Infrastructure District and not the county. Uh, we make sure that when we make the governing document, we don't exercise so much control over the district. That somehow that debt is now connected to county because we've, we're essentially controlling it. We don't want that. We want to be able to create it. And let them govern themselves. And so a hundred percent of the property owners have consented to the creation of this district. They're essentially taxing themselves. And the the district will be liable for all of its um, financing. We just set some initial terms to make sure that taxing only goes so far for so long. And that at the end of it, the public infrastructure, the public infrastructure that's created is passed on to an entity that can maintain it for all its life.
So with this document, and I realize that this is a, this is a public meeting, not a public hearing, so no public comments will be taken here. But when will the public have an opportunity to comment regarding that? How does that work?
That's, that's great. Once we, once we uh, go through the final uh, processes, which are to uh. Have the uh, agreements in place for the transfer of the public infrastructure. And then also we go through our uh, survey and assessor's office to make sure that the plot is recorded. Um, once we do that, we will put out a formal. Uh, notice for thirty days of a public meeting, so we have to advertise that public meeting for thirty days. And then with PIDs, um, we have to do, they have to do the voting at night. So we have to hold an evening meeting for you guys. So it's gonna be maybe a couple of months before we have that in line, but. We do a thirty day public notice.
And there, and so that there will be opportunity for people to have that chance to. That's great. Not a problem there. Commissioner Bolos, any questions? Does this conclude your presentation? By the way, I'd kind of jumped in a little quick.
For the PID part, yes, yeah. And we don't, we don't need any action today. We just wanted to get you up to date and make sure that you had. An opportunity to look over the governing document in case you had any questions. We do have some, like I said, some time to do some revisions on it. In the event that you have some concerns about that public, uh, about that document, um, it, and like, uh, Mr. Quinney said, it's. Something we've been using a template for, so we've been very successful with with this template so far.
I do have a question, but I'll ask that after Commissioner Farr has an opportunity. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well. First thing, we're following state code, which I like. Always nice to follow state law, in case you haven't noticed. Second thing is, is Stephanie and her team have gone out of their way. When we first started crafting a PID for Snow Basin, to make this the Weber County. Uh, value package for the state of Utah. Other counties and other cities have copied now our process, our program, so. Um, all the hours that we spent on the Snow Basin are now bearing fruit on these, this will be the third PID if I'm not wrong, that's right. So, yeah, we're following statute. Keep in mind, again, this is a self-imposed tax if they decide to do this. No county, no taxpayer dollars in Weber County, want to be clear on that, will be used. In infrastructure. The other component of this becomes very critical that they brought up is that whatever entities. Sewer, water, et cetera, they pass this on to, has to accept that infrastructure, so it won't happen until that happens.
And you as a commission. For any reason, just any reason can say, no, we don't want to create this PID. There's nothing obligating you to create the PID at any given time.
Correct. You know, two or three years ago, do any other comments?
No, forget that.
Any other comments, Commissioner? Thank you. Two or three years ago, I remember this, there was quite a bit of work that went in. To this, it was vetted through the state, this process. Uh, it was used with a Snow Basin, it was used on Promontory. Are there any changes to this document that you're, I I saw, I saw what was sent over earlier. Like, were there any changes made to this document other than the. Person, place, and that, are there any other, the foundational things changed to this? That we, that we, uh, to this one versus the ones, those benchmark ones that we've used already.
I'm looking at them right now. Nothing substantial.
Yeah, that's was my question. I just want to make sure.
Minor clarifications, just as.
And as as it should be, because everyone is gonna have minor clarifications.
Right.
Uh, but nothing, nothing substantial. I just want to make sure. Great, Commissioners, if there's no other questions. Thank you for your presentation today. We'll look for that on upcoming commission agenda. Uh, and I appreciate you posting that online for thirty days for people to have a chance to comment when that hap- part happens.
Absolutely. Uh, we have one other uh, aspect to this item.
Go ahead.
That is the um, creation of a CRA to go in conjunction with this project.
Okay.
Um, we have been reviewing the project area plan and budget and uh, wanted to bring a recommendation. From our Economic Development Finance Committee to the commission. Acting in behalf of the CRA, that uh, you take that project share plan and budget into review and consideration. I'm gonna go just really brief over it and then uh, we'll get that to you for a de- a deeper review. But I wanted to do an introduction to that today while we had the players at the table, in case you had any questions that you'd like to ask. Um, as you know, we're in the process of revising our CRA uh, participation as well as creation policies. Um, we'll have, we had the, one of those on your agenda day, but we pulled it just because of time and and we'd like to have a greater discussion about that. But until those two policies are voted into place, we've been just utilizing the recommendation of the Economic Development Finance Committee. And they are recommending that we move this CRA forward. This CRA would be predominantly used to assist in the infrastructure lift. That's been asked of Norrie Valley in their development project. Um, and uh, they've been working with us and the terms and conditions. They're asking for a seventy-five percent participation rate for fifteen years with the county. That is based on, um, that is based on the infrastructure uh that we have outside of the actual project, which is the roundabouts, some of the road improvements, things like that, to help assist with, help, help assist on the actual public end of this finance. Um, we're going to the school district, the uh Weber Basin uh Conservancy District and the fire district, asking their typical policy, which is fifty percent at fifteen years. So um we promised the different uh participating entities last year that we would uh not bring them projects that didn't go outside their, their policies and boundaries, and we're keeping to that promise.
Yeah, I, I personally had that commitment, I made that commitment to the Weber School District.
Yeah, so we're, we're going to them. Our next step in this process, if you like the way that this project area plan budget is set up, is I would start scheduling meetings with the different districts and present to their boards. Um and that would be the next step in this process, if you feel like we need to move forward with this.
Commissioner Bolos, I'll go to you again first.
I'm okay with that.
Great. Commissioner Farr?
No, I'm good, I have a planned route to take.
Wonderful. Um so we will start moving that forward. Once we get uh buy-in from the districts, we will bring that to the uh, the C R A board, which is yourselves. And we'll uh adopt that project area plan and budget. But that's part of our new process also, if we don't do that adoption um until we go through the different districts and make sure we have everybody willing to participate on board with the, with the, with the terms and conditions that we've set.
So you'll come to us with all those other terms and conditions already set, so I'm ready to go.
And then we'll move.
Before it comes here.
Absolutely.
So kind of we're last in.
Last in, that was requested uh last year.
I remember, okay.
That's all I have today.
Thank you. Commissioners, great. Let's uh change out the room for those who are, who are listening in, for those who want to participate. Our next item of discussion will be regarding the north. Uh it'll be regarding the North Fork drainage issue. So Mr. Myers, you've got a theme here, if you'll go ahead and get them coming in, please.
Yeah, some folks here, I'm gonna give you at least one of each of these. Look familiar? It's like the nightmare from last year, never ended. So uh, this is the.
Ashley, come in. Hey.
Hey.
Sean, wow, it's great to have you here.
Good to be here.
For those of you who don't know, this is the great Sean Harwood. Holy God.
Turn me red there, Jim.
No. Would you like to take two of these?
Joe, thanks for being this super helpful.
Yeah.
Two different pictures, I just kind of shared them around.
It's the same thing.
Same area, different, different angles on it.
For those in the room and those online, we've got a presentation today, including Gary Myers, Ashley Tolman, Joe Hadley, Sean Wilkinson, Bill Ross, Courtland Erickson, John Lewis, Shane Dunleavy, Andy Barfus and Sean Harwood. Again, the great Sean Harwood from the Forest Service. Let me tell you what, of all the years I've been living here, which is a lot of them, Sean's done more good with this Ford. Thank you so much for what you've done, Sean.
Appreciate it, thank you.
No, I'm s- I mean that though. Yeah, man, great dude. Gary, go ahead, lead the doubt, the discussion, and let's move forward.
You bet. So Commissioners, we got an area that um really, the river, the area of the North Fork River has really swelled and kind of jumped out of its banks right here. This is right as Highway one fifty-eight crosses it. Uh, just right kind of by the Forest Service property where the North Fork Trailhead is.
North Arm.
North Arm, thank you, North Arm Trailhead is, right as the road curves around before it approaches into the four-way stop there in Eden. So um myself and Ashley received probably at least no less than at least half a dozen grammar requests directed specifically at this area, wondering if there was a problem or if things were done according to our rules, which, which they have been. And we've, we've answered those grammar requests and got folks that information they've been asking for. But I wanted to take just a minute to maybe explain to you guys what's going on here. Uh the issue is maybe a little bit bigger globally than just uh the infrastructure improvements that are being done here for the Osprey Ranch subdivision. So as early as probably last year, when the river swelled and did what they did, they carried a ridiculous large, ridiculously large amount of sediment, debris, material, just all sorts of stuff that accumulates over a number of years of the North Fork River, not really flowing to the volume and level that it did flow to last year. What happens is all that material gets washed downstream through the box culvert there that exists underneath one fifty-eight. And then it goes down into the Forest Service property. Uh ironically, Sean and I were talking just before this meeting. Uh the Forest Service did a project where they built a pedestrian bridge over what was at that time before last year's flows, the North Fork River at that point. Last year's flows completely rerouted the channel through their property as it goes down into Pine View. And so the bridge and improvements and efforts that were done on their part to bridge that portion of the river were almost uh rendered.
Useless.
Okay, I didn't want, that was a strong word, but it was the only one.
I call it, I call it London Bridge. It's in the middle of nowhere, crossing no water, so.
I didn't want to, it sounded like I was taking a shot at your guys' efforts because it was a noble effort, but the flows we saw were just un- unwarranted, unchallenged, unforeseen. So then you fast forward to this year, when we have a slightly above average year. Uh and it's, it's, it's been left with a channel that's probably challenged, uh is probably the best way to put it. So um the reason I wanted to work with you guys on a, on a work session with this, number one, I've received some emails from the developers, from some concerned citizens up there. There was kind of an olive branch extended by the developer to uh, if, if they were allowed to go in and do some work and clear some of this material out of the channel to help restore the channel to its previous location, that the outcome of that would be that they could keep the material that they pulled out of the river channel. However, the reason I wanted to bring this before you guys, if you recall last year, um we did a few different projects all over the place uh during, during, when we were under an emergency declaration. And uh we received uh calls to come back and to repair uh things that were done as part of that. And, and ultimately, we found that really, the direction you guys gave us was to, to, if you remember specifically, the direction was to focus on the main channels of the Weber River out west and up here in the valley to let the private individuals where the river goes through their property handle and manage those sections of the river. And so that's kind of been the method of operation we have followed up through this year. However, if you follow that to where we're at, we're kind of in a situation where there's a lot of water running down the North Fork and I'm uh glancing over at Mr. Hadley over here. He's probably gonna want to start lobbing rocks at my head of even opening the gate slightly to work on this. But, but, but I don't know that this is necessarily a county issue to, 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 to address. Um, there are, there is some private accountability from the landowners where the prob- the river runs through their property. Uh they would have to go get a stream alteration permit, no different than we as the county did. Uh I know the Forest Service has been working on one for their property, uh as well as maybe a little deeper document to realign some of the channel and re- restore it to where it is, which involves the Army Corps on, at that situation. But I wanted to maybe throw this out to you guys to see if this is something, number one, do we want to let the developer try to obtain a permit and then harness or utilize that material that's removed from it? Or is there any other direction you guys might have for us in this situation? It's kind of a tricky issue because, yeah, feel free to, and, and I've tried to, we, we're running late. So I've tried to be brief and tried to hurriedly get all the information out there. And I, and please forgive me if I've left something out or bumbled through something, so.
Yeah, just to, for additional context, and I think that was a perfect summary. We had unusually high flows last year, and if you stand over there now, you'll see big piles of sediment that's throwing the river this way and that way and, and whatever. But we, we have, as you said, gone to, um, well, first we called Brett, was it Brett? What's the guy's name?
Darren Rasmussen.
Darren Rasmussen, yes. And what's who's he with?
He's with the State Division of Water Quality.
Quality, okay. So we asked him to come out and take a look at it, he did. We, we just said, well, make sure everyone knows we did what we did correctly. We've, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars boring under the river, not going through the river. You know, everything was done correctly, he verified that, kind of got ahold of Gary, yep, everything's done correctly. And we said, look, what this really needs is, we need to dig out the, the sediment there. And, and, you know, he just didn't want to do that. He just said, I want it to be a wild river and this is good habitat and, and on and on, like, okay. And, and what he asked us to do is restore the bank and put the, put the banks kind of, you know, build up, uh build up banks, yeah. Which would actually keep the water on the pack's land, which would be a bad idea, in my opinion, because it would, it would come around like it is, and then it couldn't get to the box culvert if there was a hill there. So, you know, we kind of left our hands up going, well, we don't know what to do, if they won't let us help, then, you know, there's really nothing we can do. The other thing I would point out, that this is not mostly on our land. The road, you know, our, our land kind of goes on the side of the road. That big area there is the pack's property. And uh, you know, if they simply fixed their side of the road and we fixed our side of the road, you know, or, or we tried to, we might need to get permits to do that, we're certainly willing to fix our side. We just tried to help everybody and that backfired on us. So um, somebody needs to dredge it out, you know, in my opinion. But the state doesn't like seeing people do that. And, and we tr- we went to the homeowner several times and got kind of negative letters back. And you'll hear from our attorney and like, okay, well, we'll just back off and.
Which homeowner?
Uh Barfus sent us a pretty good zinger and, and, you know, we're, we're trying to offer help, but it's important to note, this is not our land, it's, and it's not even his, for that matter. Um, and, you know, there's an easement that he enjoys going across that land, and we don't want to see dirt there either. But, you know, once we're done with what we're working on, we're gonna be bringing up the driveway and, and whatnot. Not that we have to, but we, of course, we will. But the bigger thirty thousand foot picture that Gary's talking about is still an issue, and, and we're getting flooded out too. Not as badly as the packs. But like I said, we tried to help and we can't seem to figure out how to do that.
Well, it may actually be more impactful for us, just because we do have three wells down there. We have two culinary wells and a shallow well. And, you know, it's now backing up and being flooded, so.
Gary, so where do we go from here?
What's the? Well, there's, there's a couple of different directions we could go. We, we always have the do nothing option, which is kind of what we've done up till now and say, listen, this is, county doesn't own property down there, we, which we really don't, th- that, that's the simple answer. Um, that's one option. Number two, we could try to work through getting a permit with, with Darren Rasmussen. And I've done those, um they're, they're not always super fast, but uh I think this will be probably much faster than the one I had to get throughout west last fall. That was a four-month process, this might be hopefully half that amount of time. Um and it, and then at that point, we have to go through and work with a lot of the different private landowners up through this area to get access permission. If we get that, then we could remove some of the material. Or we could allow the developers to pursue a permit to do this. Um, keep in mind that if, if the county does the work, what we typically have done is we've removed that material uh and we've kind of used it to shore up the banks where we work. But keep in mind, we only work from one side, we don't work from both sides. So what you would get effectively is, is a reconstructed or reassured bank on the one side. And we, we don't want to impact more property than we have to, I guess, is what I'm saying. And so it wouldn't be an equal effort on both sides. And, and the other fact is uh, we don't really have, we're about done with our river crew time. They've got two weeks left, Joe? May fifteenth, so we're down to two weeks with, with our river crew and then, then they're done. And Joe's on to paving, if he hasn't already started on to paving already. And so then it becomes a staffing issue and manpower issue. And I say all this glancing at poor Joe because I, I don't have the license to rent shit. And then Joe's guys do, but they're, they're, they're needed elsewhere to fix roads. Or the third option is we let an outside party pursue that permit and remove the material at the same time, using it to their, hauling it off for, for their uses.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna uh ask Joe, you make a comment, then I'm gonna go to you, Mr. Harwood, to see if you have a comment. And then Mr. Pack, I'm gonna allow you to comment here.
Thank you.
So go ahead, Joe.
Who do you have to get convinced from?
It'd be the state, Darren Rasmussen of the state.
The state, why doesn't the state take any responsibility in clearing these rivers? Why do we have to go in and clean where the state is?
Fair question, and their answer generally, as we've asked, was, we met with them last year, their answer is kind of the same as to what John described, they actually like this.
Yeah.
They look at this and this makes them smile, makes them happy. And they view this as a happy, healthy river within a flood plain, doing what a river is supposed to do. They do not like channelized rivers, they don't like you working in the channel to achieve that goal and that effort, and they would prefer this. However, they understand there are effects to land, and so they allow you to do that in those areas uh to try to protect the land and allow it to be used.
What are they gonna do along Highway eighty-four, where it's about that Weaver River's about where you cut into freeway?
Great question.
Yeah.
At some point.
You can't answer that.
I, I, that's not my domain, I'm sorry, I, I don't have an answer for you, Commissioner.
Any other questions, Joe? I don't know, I'm being, sorry, it's the state thing. I don't know what the crap's going on down there at the state. I don't know who set up those things.
Makes you wonder, doesn't it?
Mr. Harwood, thank you for being here representing the federal government, Ronald Reagan's speech.
It's his brother. I just lost my train of thought now, I can't, I have no con- no. Uh we, we know that the other side of this is, is an issue. I mean, if, we wouldn't, we've lost a considerable amount of bridges. Where that new bridge, where we placed it, working with the Trails Foundation and everything. We went back, when we put that bridge in, we cut, we sent our saw crews in there and they cut all of the vegetation back and everything to clear that. We're kind of like the state, when we're federal, we kind of like it to be a natural state. We've had a, there was a picnic area in there in days of old that we've done away with because of the flood issues. Like I said, we've lost all those bridges, we lost one last year when the channel changed. And, you know, now there's water flowing everywhere there, the bridges actually has water going under it, you just can't get to it for the water around it. So we, we try to keep this um, this area maintained as the best we can. The trail in there, we're, we're trying to decide what we want to do, and we have three options. We can move it out on the freeway, take it around from the parking lot up to the top, drop it back down where it hits the dirt trail again. We can put the trail back the way it is, which has been a problem. Or, and, or we can do away with that trail altogether, move that bridge out of there and put it somewhere else where we can use it. Um, we do a considerable amount of work in there every year. The boardwalks in there are done now, I mean, the water's just rolled them, and so it has to have something done. I don't know that we can help with anything above, I don't, I mean, we can make the flow. We've got a tree that fell across the, the, the main channel just recently, and we need to get in there and get that out. We can't get in there right now, I mean, the water's too high. But um we try to maintain that other side, and we need to do something with it. It's no longer a picnic ground or, and like I said, the trail is very questionable. So it's kind of like the Jefferson Hop issue, it just keeps, we put something in there and it just gets taken out. So we're trying to figure out the best way. We actually did approach um the Army Corps, about a four oh four channel alteration permit earlier this year because of trying to decide what we wanted to do with the bridge. So we're, we're working on. Um, we just don't, we don't have any solutions. Um, working with Gary, maybe we can come up with an even better one, I don't know.
Mr. Pack, thank you, Joe.
Thank you. I wasn't planning on saying here where it's not public, but thank you very much, I appreciate that. Court Pack, my mom is genie, and she owns, and then my, my brother's in the White House, we're over in the log home, and it's all the pack. And so, but thank you. Last year, I would like to say thanks, I think it was Joe, I believe, we, we contacted someone in the county. There was quite a log jam that was backing up and was gonna cause some issues. And within twenty-four hours, you guys had the track going, cleaning it up, getting that log jam out, and, and it's crazy. It uh, I have seen this down here for, I'm getting old. It was, it's been fifty, almost fifty-five plus years now. I've seen a number of things happen to this river. I personally have spent over twelve months working with the state and the Corps of Engineers, trying to get thirty years ago, when we were gonna put our road in, when we built. Put our road in, when we built our home. I wanted to get in. We owned the property the other side of the bank. And I was under the impression, this is my gravel. You own the water, I own the gravel and things. And so. I would like to get a permit to do that. Twelve months later, the Army Corps and State showed up and said, no. It's not your gravel and you're not gonna touch it. And, and, uh, I was a little hurt. I was a little bent and. And he says, but come with me here. And we walked down the river a bit and he showed me where. He said, a hundred years ago, this is right where the river came through. He said, look at this. It's full of gravel and sand right here. And if you want to bring your front end loader in here and fill up your dump trucks and take it and put your driveway in. You're a good seventy-five to a hundred feet off the river. We will give you a permit to do that. I said, wonderful, we'll do it. As far as touching the river, he said, that river is off limits. Now, for our property here, I have seen work done in the river. I've seen a group come in, I believe it was from the University of Utah years ago. And they had some really great ideas, taking log, large cottonwood trees that have fallen and cable them all together. And at first it looked pretty good, very expensive, a lot of manpower. The next year. Uh, not quite so good. By the third year, the logs were floating down into piney with cable on it. The logs were decaying and floating down. It was an absolute mess. Years ago, this is really gonna date me. I remember when that road was put in the whole approach. And the entire road down to Dr. Gardner's home, he's the one that built there. And they got in the river and did that work and took all that pit run out and built that up. And that was a mess. The Army Corps and we worked with Darren, John Bartholomew is a great resource at the state. And he said, you get in that river and what we need are thirty degree banks or a, a certain degree on the bank. And those banks need to be four, five, six feet tall, a good ten feet back. That's how you're going to contain this river. He said, to try to just take it out of the middle and dredge that out. That high water's gonna come in and it will start to eat away the banks. And without that type of development in there. He said, it is just not going to work. A number of years ago, I mean, we're talking twenty-five. Have you seen the big cement culverts down there on some of the bins?
Yep.
They took those culverts in and filled them with gravel and thought they would work for a while. But the best thing that I have seen is. Large banks, dig out that river and then put it to the side and build up that. And get that right angle so the water's not cutting into it. And then have the banks be four, five. Feet high, another eight to ten feet back off. And as you do that, then it, it, it gives strength to the bank to contain that water. I remember going camping down there in the old campground over in here that's all in void now. I love the trails. I love the bridge. We use that bike path all the time and I'm sorry that that has gone awry and, uh, we love it. I'm totally in favor of doing this. It's not much, it's pennies, I realized. Uh, we cut it, we bell it, everything goes to my mom. I bet we've lost. In the last couple of years, maybe, I don't know, eight hundred to a thousand bells. Of hey, say, well, so what? Well, at eight, ten bucks a bell, you know, you're looking at ten thousand and, again, my mom's well-to-do. She is a widow, but ten thousand dollars. To her helps and it's a good thing.
Let me, uh, so what he's proposing though still has to be permitted.
It does. And, and the answers I've got, as I've asked in the past to actually work in the river. Is a cord or court?
Court, just like a cord of wood.
Okay, okay, cord. Sorry, I, I didn't want to screw it. Yeah, I apologize.
I've been called a lot of things.
The answers I've got are stay out of the river. Don't touch it. Don't touch it, hands off. Kind of similar to your initial response and. They've also just kind of clarified to us and said, we strongly feel and believe that a river that moves is a good river. A river that adjusts its banks and moves and meanders is healthy and a good thing. So they don't want us trying to channelize it or control it or. Do anything of that nature to achieve that perfect bank because it, it always seems to. Adjust itself depending on ebbs and flows from flows it sees year to year, if that makes any sense.
It, it sure does, Gary. I think. In working with Darren and John Bartholomew, as well as I forget who it is at the Corps right now, they know it's a big issue. It's a really big concern. Is it life threatening or, or gonna hurt a home? No, but it's losing a lot of taxpayer dollars down further down with the bridges and trails that we've already put in. I think if the county were to go, private landowners were to go, those that had. Uh, interest because of developments and things were to go and say, look, Darren, as well as Court. This needs to be rectified. This needs to be taken care of. And it is a process. Like I said, I was twelve months getting the property from this. But I, I really believe that they, that, that, that you can move that rock.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks for the opportunity. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Three, give us those three options again. Nothing, channel, or what? Or, so nothing. We were county forces do the adjustment and removal of material. Or number three would be have a private force do the removal of the material.
Commissioner Bolos, we'll go to you next, and Commissioner Flor.
Jim, can I insert one ten second thing?
Two sec, ten seconds.
Please know that it was not our family at all, as mentioned, that said, no, hell no, talk to our attorneys, nothing at all. Our family, nothing.
So you're not opposed to letting all my.
Not at all. I, I am opposed, Commissioner Flor, I would be opposed to taking out large amounts. Because that's going to impact the river in a negative way. I've seen it. But we are very much in favor of working with Shane, John, and, and trying to get this thing under control.
Good to know. Mr. Bolos.
About Gary's three options, I, I'm open to one or three. I don't think, I don't think that the county, um, I don't think we should place that burden on our. On our employees to fix it. And it, but if it can be solved with the other parties. That's what I am.
Thank you. Commissioner Flor.
Well, I've got a little experience on this and I think Joe will. Make this, and I think Gary's seen it, maybe he had it last year, we had the same problem on the Lower South. We had a bridge there that my neighbors own called the Burley Bridge. That for years has always, in fact, it would be underwater right now, but wasn't for the efforts undertaken by my family and his family. So I flooded upstream of the Burley Bridge. Uh, I took it upon myself, my family spent thirty to forty thousand dollars to come in and break, because my bank was washing away. Uh, put in rocks, big boulders, thirty thousand to take care of my problem, clear brush across. The Bertleys took care of their problem, which was they did get a permit, uh, in about a two week period of time. Uh, that saved that bridge this year. And I looked at it, uh, yesterday. It's within now about a foot of that. But you've got a very clear, open area. The brush is gone. I think Joe can attest to the piles of lumber. And actually, his crews came up and, um, helped. Jeff Harrison, who's also the West, you can clear out some snags there. So it can be done. So that river a year ago. Is a total testimony to number one, clearing out the brush. And, and I agree, if you look at that bank, it's not, wasn't taken from the center and put, it was scooped up. Thirty, thirty degree, thirty-five degree, built, uh, back up on the, on the crown, you know. You know, that water's flowing today. But I, I agree with Commissioner Bolos. Again, county didn't step in and pay one dime of my remediation. I don't expect them to. I don't want them to. I don't think pri- any private owner, but give the right to the private owner. Again, I think you have to have a, when you say take the material, that concerns me a little bit. I think that that material needs to go back in a fashion that protects that bank. If there's excess that can go, I guess that would be up to you to look at. But it's a probable problem. You've got, you've got brush to take out, you've got snags to take out. You, you bring it back, you build a good bank. Uh, protect your bridges. So to me, it's a simple answer, but I think it's, I don't know what, was it one and three?
One would be do nothing, three would be private forces.
I'm a, I'm a three or one, uh, I don't think anybody wants to see it go. But it's gonna take an agreement, it's gonna take some cooperation between neighbors up there, not to, you know, they see somebody working on a river. You know, they don't call the Corps, they go and say, can I help you? You know, can I bring my backhoe down to help you? They don't call the police in. And I don't know if that can happen up there or not, so.
I was just gonna say, maybe we could do three B. One of the, one of the things Darren said to us is that when. Private property is endangered like this, the county can get involved and help that, that permitting process. And I think. With your guys' support, we, we'd be able to get those permits a lot easier. I don't know how comfortable we are doing the work if.
Thank you.
Well.
Okay, I'm gonna take Joe's comment, then I'm gonna, then I'm gonna take my turn.
I, I have to, I have to say that, you know, I, we have tried. You know, believe it or not, we've tried to be good neighbors and, and tried to solve problems and not create problems and. You know, in the last year or two, I think you would agree that we've gotten a lot of flak and a lot of. Uh, anger. And, you know, change is a scary thing for everybody and we're the poster boy for change now. So. Uh, you know, while I would like to still help, the, the problem now is no matter what I do, I'm the bad guy. And the newspaper's gonna write me up as, oh, he's ruining the river. Or whatever I do, it works this year and next year we get a big flood and it shifts. And now I'm liable for something. And honestly, I'm so gun shy now from trying to do the right thing. It makes me not want to do anything. And I, you know, I kind of find myself in the same boots as the county going, look, we're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't. And. That's, that's really a shame. It, it really is. I, I. There were times when our whole community got together and we built a beautiful trail. You know, but does anybody remember that now? Did I get any credit for that now? I mean, they're up there trying their best to fight a sewer. How ridiculous is that, knowing we're all on wells? So I, I don't know what to do going forward. Honestly, I'd like to help, but I just, every time I stick my neck out, it gets shut, it gets cut off. So I don't know that my offer to help this on, on anyone else's land anyway is, is on the table and. The very last time I went to them is like, don't touch our land. So, you know, and this is their land. So great. I'll respect that and I won't touch it. I'll fix my side of the river though. I mean, I, I need to do what I need to do to fix stuff. I'm not asking you for money to fix it. But, you know, I'm in a very strange place where I just can't do no right. So. That's not to do anything, I guess.
Thank you. You know, Eric, we shouldn't have got to this point. You're the ambassador. You're expected to ambassador things.
Entertain the group.
Uh, listen, commissioners, I, I was, uh, I learned a lot by watching the actions. Of neighbors last year along the south for a cage and, and you being a property owner there, uh. Uh, I've watched as you just said, hey, this is our responsibility to go in and take care of and. You got folks together and, and you, you took care of a lot of that stuff. And so. Uh, we've got a, a, a one and three and a three and one. Uh, so those both equal four. I like the idea of the three B concept. If we can go in and help them, but help the neighbors. By application, helping with the application. I don't think any of us have a problem with that, Gary. We. Could support that. And so if you do that, but I think short of doing the work, Joe, we're gonna. For right now, unless it's an all fire emergency, keep you out of the river. And, uh, and, and just, but please help them with the application and, and so that we can do something. To help the people that are being negatively affected by. And here's the thing. Where I grew up, if people put something on your property, they're expected to come and, and bring it back. I would hope all those people that live up. Clear up the Liberty, come get all their dirt back, get all their silt, you know, because that's where it all came from. Nobody's made that comment, but that's where I, that's where I'm at. If there's, i- is there anything else? Is that you have clear direction on that now?
Yeah, I'm happy to help with the permit. Not a big deal.
Okay.
If there's no other things.
Let me know. But what's deemed an emergency, what's really an, an emergency, I would say would be life. Life and property's the house, yeah.
And we're not there yet, Commissioners. So, okay, thank you. Appreciate your direction on that.
Oh, he's not in a ditch somewhere. He's doing that's good. With all due respect, you two. It's already done. Commissioners, we're gonna move on to item number six in our agenda, which is adjusting the June tenth. Holiday to the following, what the state does and adjustments to the three dash two hundred. Reasonable accommodation policy due to Pregnant Workers Fairness Act, PWFA. Our Director of Human Resources, the very competent, com- competent and capable Emily Wild. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. So I have a copy of the leave practice. As well. And so this just goes to, so June nineteenth is a holiday. So the state actually. Um, designates the Monday. As a holiday, if June nineteenth falls on a holiday, if it falls on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday or Friday, they designate. The Monday, um.
Following.
Pres- the preceding Monday and then. A, if it falls on a Saturday or Sunday, the following Monday. So basically having it always fall on a Monday. So the question is, is does Weber County want to follow the same state guidelines and have it be? On a Monday?
It's not a guideline, is it?
Well, I mean.
Uh, is it a may or a shall?
Well, I think it's a.
I'd have to look up the statute. The way the email came across was we needed to make a determination as to what we were gonna follow, but. It makes sense to follow what other entities are gonna do as far as like continuity of business.
Right. I don't think it's required, but so the state's doing it. Salt Lake County follows the same.
The courts are doing it.
The courts are doing it.
It's not a shall, but it's a recommended.
Right.
So.
Davis County. So, and I did reach out to some department heads. I, I reached out to the library, the sheriff. Sean, um, the health department. So, um. The health department was the only one that had a concern with moving it this year to a Monday. On their WIC because they already have appointments scheduled. To move it, um, but everybody else said it would be fine with them. So. I think if we did choose to move it and move it this year, then, um. The, the WIC could still take the nineteenth off instead of the seventeenth. I think we could be flexible there. So.
Commissioner Bolos, uh, this, this is in your portfolio. I, before you, I'd ask you to comment and then I'll go to you next, Commissioner. Flor. What is your recommendation, Ms. Wild?
My recommendation is to move it to Monday.
Very good. Thank you.
Said something about WIC employees though.
So the WIC employees, they already have, um, patients scheduled on the seventeenth, so it becomes. He said difficult for them to reschedule, but I think for this year, we would allow them. To either take the nineteenth off or flexible holiday. So for example, the library. Works on this holiday anyways, so they do a flex holiday, meaning their employees can take off any day during that pay period as a holiday. So we've allowed that because they're open that day. So I think we could. Allow the flexibility with the WIC, so they don't have to reschedule.
Sure, yeah. Been supportive of that.
Thank you.
That recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Flor.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Come on, come on, come on.
I, I think it's always, uh, good not to have a holiday in the middle of the week, just for a lot of. I think it's always, uh, good not to have a holiday in the middle of the week just for a lot of reasons. People appreciate it more if they could turn that into a three-day. Plus, a lot of times I like following state law. Not all the time, this is a recommendation.
It's a recommendation.
No, I'm gonna accept their recommendation.
I've got the soundbite though. I like following state law, your son. Okay. If there's no, if there's no adverse opinion from legal, then. I think you've got the general direction from the commission as well.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Great. Anything else, commissioners, you'd like to discuss regarding this matter?
Not that one, but the next one.
None for me on that.
Very good. Okay, well.
So here's the next policy.
You know, just when you thought it was safe to go outside.
So.
Reasonable accommodation.
Yeah, so back in June twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-three, um, there was.
Gage is probably the only one old enough.
So last year.
Last year.
Yes. I think you were around.
There was a new federal, um. Law, the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. And then this year, the EEOC issued final regulations to carry out the law. So basically. This says that we must provide reasonable accommodations for pregnant workers. So during their present, pre- pregnancy, childbirth. And or medical related conditions due to the pregnancy. So I believe we've already. Viewed pregnancy as an accommodation here at the county, but this basically puts it in writing in our policy. That if somebody was to become pregnant and ask for a reasonable accommodation, we have to provide that. So whether it's a chair, whether they need excess restroom breaks or food breaks or. You know, time off to go to the doctor, whatever, would, we have to consider and do reasonable accommodations. So this changes to this policy addresses the Pregnancy Workers Fairness Act.
Comments or questions? I'll move to you, Commissioner Flor first, and you, Commissioner Bolos.
Looks like we're just following the ADA policy, right?
We're just, yep, we're just adding in. Federal law.
We should talk to Sean Harwood.
I don't know if we've got, I mean, I guess we've got a choice, but. I don't think the choice is.
I, I mean, I, I think the choice would not be good. I think the choice would result in legal action if we chose not to.
Someone might, for instance, goes on bed rest because out of medical necessity, there's always the option of F M L A.
Right. So, yeah, so F M L A, um, but this, you know. Could be extended leave more than what F M L A allows. I mean, F M L A allows twelve weeks. But if you want twelve weeks after a baby's born and you have to go on bed rest before, then a reasonable accommodation would be. Allow them leave without pay to go on bed rest. Or, you know, it's very specific to the person and, and the job and what they. What the physical demands of the job are. So, but yeah, this requires us to provide accommodations.
I'm okay.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Thanks for keeping us solid.
Pregnant pause? Yeah, pregnant pause. Speaking of pregnant pauses, I think it's time for the motion for the last thing on this agenda, which by the way. We're back on schedule thanks to that one being.
Wow.
So.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.